I'm calling the village board meeting Monday, September twenty-sixth to order. Go call please.
Trustee Hartman. Trustee Brad.
Here.
Trustee Brother.
Here.
Trustee Berlin.
Here.
Trustee Polakowski.
Here.
Trustee Calvater. Here.
Here. Can we stand for a pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, to St. John's.
All right, we're at public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. Please state your name and where you live when you speak, and we'll take comment from the public on all topics that are here in the meetings, and this will be your opportunity. The rest, once we close it, it will be just four members. Do you want to go with Dana first?
It's up to you if you want to start with Dana.
Yeah.
Thank you. So my name is Dana Fennell. I'm the superintendent of the same prosperity areas schools of town. Really appreciate your letting me come to your meeting tonight to share information about our operational referendum in November. There are quite a few slides in the presentation. I'm going to keep my comments brief due respect of the lengthy agenda that we have, but certainly welcome any questions or comments after my presentation. We are doing fifty-five of these throughout our community. We want to make sure that everyone can make an informed decision when they go up to the polls on their primary. And so I just want to start out by saying, you know, we think we have a really good thing going here in our district. We're number one district in Dane County, number two in the state. Our kids leave us every year and do incredible things. Our teachers are very educated, committed. We're situated in a very, very competitive labor market here in Dane County. We want to make sure that when it comes to the district that staff wants to teach in, to work in, it is ours. This is just a quick snapshot of some amazing things kids have done just last year. That Mark Hanselbaum, she was the Gatorade athlete of the year in the state of Wisconsin last year. She's now running cross country at Michigan. Our marching bands scored their highest ever score at the state competition last year. Our spring musical is awesome. We never really have been going to see them. Bottom line, we have something for every kind of kid. There's something for their passions, their interests, and we want to continue to offer a wide variety of offerings for our students. But we're coming up against some challenges. The first and foremost is inadequate funding from the state of Wisconsin. Every budget with legislature determines that we are going to give more money to public schools. That's only happened twice. In the past decade or so, we've functioned under a revenue limit, and therefore, the only way that we can get more funds is to go to our voters and ask them for support. Couple of data points that just kind of put an exclamation point on that. In twenty oh-two, Wisconsin ranks eleventh in the country when it came to public dollar support for public schools. This year, we dropped to twenty-fifth. We are only better than Idaho and Indiana when it comes to per people increases over eighteen-year periods from one to twenty-two. So when I talk to the governor, when I talk to our state representatives, these are the kinds of data points that I'd like to see turn around, considering we're sitting on a five billion dollars surplus at the state, like more money to become a public education. These two charts really tell the story of why we're in the pickle that we're in when it comes to our budget. On the right is the chart that I mentioned when it comes to increases to public funding of schools for the past decade or so, and then the rates of inflation that we've been dealing with over the same time period. In twenty twenty-two, the rate of inflation was four point seven percent. Twenty twenty-three is predicted to land somewhere between seven point two eight and nine point five seven. We aren't growing at the rate anywhere near that. So we are looking at a structural deficit over the next couple of years. Student enrollment is a really big deal. It's how the state determines how much money is given to public schools. For those of you who've been in our community for some time, you know that historically, we have been a district with increases in enrollment. But since twenty eighteen, which is when our last referendum was successfully passed, some things have changed. A couple of points that I'd love to point out. Our last year's graduating class has a hundred and ten students larger than our incoming kindergarten class. There's some questions about birth rates, and also we know that our housing market in our community across the eight municipalities that we serve is challenging. Not only are there very few homes for sale, the price points on those homes are very high. And therefore, people with young children find it very difficult to live and come and move into our community. In addition, there have been lots of multifamily housing developments springing up, particularly in the city of Middleton. We don't yield school age children from those. We get kids when houses turnover, when empty nesters like me look at our house and we decide to sell. Hard thing now, I might make a lot of money on the house that I'm selling, but I can't find someplace to go. And so we're just not seeing that housing turnover. And that has negatively impacted our enrollment. Also, the pandemic was hard for us. They lost about two hundred and seventy kids to homeschool, private school, local school. We have recovered about sixty percent of those families that left us, which is great. We've also exceeded our enrollment projections for this year. So we're hopeful that we're coming out of the pandemic fog, but that was challenging for us. So in a five-year time period, twenty eighteen, nineteen, we were growing. So we saw about two point four million dollars from the state of Wisconsin. Heading into this year, we're not growing. So we actually took the one point one million dollar hit. So enrollment is really, really important. We could see last year into this year that our enrollment was going to be difficult on our budget. So we've already cut six point four million dollars from our overall budget. We need to be, you know, diligent with taxpayer funds, and so we're tightening our belts in all kinds of ways in response to our enrollment challenges. Our district has also received about seven million dollars in COVID relief monies. Sounds like a lot of money. It's kind of a blessing and a curse a little bit because these monies are one-time funds, and once you spend them, they're gone. And they also have earnings streams attached. So there are only certain things that we can use these monies for. We are not using them to fill or plug any kind of operational deficit. And so once those monies are spent, which we have two years to spend them, then they're gone. Over the course of time, since about nineteen ninety-five, we've come to our voters on twenty-four different times with our random questions. A little less than fifty percent of those have been successful. The most recent referendum was in twenty eighteen, which resulted in a variety of capital improvement projects. We had a seventy percent yes vote of that referendum, which is really, really strong and very encouraging. Eight, or excuse me, nine of fifteen Dane County school districts are also going to referendum, including all of our neighbors, Wantagh, Barona, Bellville, Oregon, Sun Ferry. We're all in the same predicament, dealing with the same factors. And so many districts across Dane County are going to their voters as well. So what happens if we aren't successful on November eighth? We've done some budget forecasts. You can see over the next couple of years, these are big dollar amounts that we're looking at from a budget perspective. Totally twenty-four point nine million over a four-year period. Eighty-four percent of our budget goes to people. So when we look at these kinds of deficits, that means we're going to be cutting people programs and positions. It would mean higher class sizes, the leading decreases in extracurriculars and athletic offerings, and potentially even school consolidation. So this is not being shared as a scare tactic, but just to be very transparent with our community about what we'd need to consider if we were not successful in November. We started engaging our community early about this. In January, we had several engagement sessions. We also sent a survey to everyone who lives in our district. Included in that survey were three dollar scenarios, and that also included the tax impact associated with each of the three. You can see there was good support for each scenario. The Board of Education decided on the one in the middle. So we're asking our voters to support the twenty-four point nine million dollar four-year non-recurring referendum. What that means is that in four years' time, if we are still facing significant budget issues, we have to repeat this process and do it all over again. Put a question on the ballot and ask our voters to improve. Here's the tax impact associated, and this is on a hundred thousand dollars of assessed property value. You can see it's relatively small in year one because we were able to decrease some debt. Past couple of years, it does get more significant over the years two, three, and four. This is the impact that we will be facing. If any of the factors I talked about, state funding, enrollment, or inflation change were positive, it actually will go down. I do want to share a little bit of information about the stadium project because there's a lot of this information out there about our stadium project. So if you've been by our high school recently, you've seen our football stadium is torn up. About a year ago, a group of private alumni came to me in the Board of Education wanting to strike up a private-public partnership to make improvements to our football stadium. If you've been into our stadium and use restroom facilities, you might remember that they were not E D A compliant. So if you needed an E D A compliance pressure, we had you to double wipe or out the back of the stadium. The district is contributing two million dollars to this project. It costs two million dollars to upgrade the restrooms. The rest of the project is being privately funded. One donor has already given us six point seven million dollars towards the project. So overall, in total, the project cost thirteen million. The district's percentage is fifteen percent. The monies the district is using towards this project, they're coming from the sale of land. We own sixteen residential lots right across this street from Hope Farm Elementary, or in most elementary school. Those are for sale right now. We've already sold nine lots. So the proceeds from the land sale, that's what the district is using to contribute to the project, so it's not on the backs of taxpayers. So fifteen percent is our contribution, and it's going to result in a pretty magnificent stadium that will benefit kids in our entire community. Here's the question that is going to be on the November ballot. It's very wordy, but the important thing to know is twenty-four point nine million dollars over a four-year period and non-recurring. What will this help us do? It'll help us ensure that we offer a wide range of academic and corporate offerings for kids. It'll help keep talented staff working in our school and facilities. It'll prep new staff to our district. About a hundred and fifty of our certified staff could retire any year. So we also have to think about hiring each year, and then it'll also help us address some pensionary pressures. At the end of the day, it's about our amazing kids, and we want to maintain the level of excellence that we currently enjoy. So with that, I would welcome any questions or comments.
I would just say I have one comment.
Yes.
On the statement that it's not taxpayers' money, the two million, I would guess that it was the taxpayers that bought the land to start with. So the proceeds of it, even though it's going to this, I would still consider that taxpayers. So I guess the only point that I
Yeah, you know, as a comparison, Sun Ferry just did their stadium. Cost of it was seventeen point four million, and that was part of the referendum. So I can be more specific when I talk about that section.
I certainly appreciate you coming and sharing that with us.
And I appreciate the time. I really do.
Yeah, I would say thanks for coming. And then that's the number one question that I'm giving is that, like, how do we reconcile the so just talking voice in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, do you have? Bobby, do we have anybody to sign up to speak?
I'm nobody can advance.
Oh, I would have had mine in. It's still out there.
All right, so who would like, Brian, you want to come up first?
Sure.
All right. All right.
Your talk, we're, here's my name, Brian, produce five thousand Woffenburg. You're lovely, Chris.
Yeah, thank you. Understand the board is discussing with possible consideration on the brewery road upgrade later this evening, and I appreciate the work it's behind that so far. I was unable to make the visioning sessions. I was able to talk to Mike, he was all handing out information, and really, again, appreciate the thoughtfulness that the board is putting into this. But in looking through the packets, it's with the four proposals, it doesn't, there isn't enough information to say, well, I really like that one, I don't like that one. There was no information about possible assessments to landowners or how would the sidewalks or path or anything was going to be maintained. And I would just encourage the board to, and maybe that information is available in the background, and just I didn't see it in the packet. And I would encourage the board to think of those long-term costs, and it grapples with this project of a sidewalk that really doesn't go anywhere. I mean, it's useful from valley to Woffenburg. The hundred-foot extension in all four of the proposals from Woffenburg to the north, that's like really to nowhere. And I understand it's for future projects. But perhaps like on that chunk back to the way for whatever future project might be, wherever expansion happens up the hill or I can sit in a back. So yeah, we're excited about it. Brewery Road has, you know, it's widening up the land seven point seven on, and to utilize that better is certainly attractive. But in terms of projects for the village right now, ever since it was repaved, that could have been flood. That looks amazing. So anyway, that's all I had to offer, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Brian. Seth, did you want to comment?
Yeah. Seth Johnson, my belt and two. My name's Brian here. I'd like to commend first of all for all your efforts. Didn't worry all about this. You've seen some of my comments before in the packet. Overall, I went to see bill to add a pedestrian amenity, whether it's a sidewalk or a path. I don't really have specific recommendations for, but I think it needs to be something. I have a few concerns about losing front yards and things, and it looks like we can do this without encroaching on people's yards more than we do. So I think that's wonderful. So Brian made a good point, or it looks like you can land with everything. That's one of the times I was to make any transportation facility. People are going to drive what they feel is comfortable in the situation. And if it looks like a wide open racetrack, they're probably going to drive a little bit. So the best thing you can do to reduce speeds is reduce the width of the road. And these proposals do that, and then use that width to give the sidewalk that. I'm much more in favor of using both kinds of options, bump outs, et cetera, chicanes, or some sort of diversions, or it's not such a strange shot rather than speed bumps or speed humps or speed tables, or whatever you want to call them. You know, those are going to be noisy. They cause maintenance concerns. They cause strange concerns. With this project, so we're not in favor of the speed, the vertical splits and speed options. But by doing things to narrow the roadway, make people not go in a straight line. Those are the ones, but yeah, definitely we need a sidewalk. We need a four-way path. I'm trying to make some comments of that don't go anywhere. Yeah, that's true. It doesn't go anywhere now, but this is where we need to start. As we review any build of streets that don't have sidewalks, we should put one in and at least and so we can have a good network as we improve our streets to the village. Right now, during the day, during the summer, it's a safe place to ride a bike for the males first, to eat and walk as soon as it's night. During winter, you got snow on the road. I don't feel comfortable walking down that road in the winter. So we need somebody to look at my block.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to speak?
Number seven. Ten hundred forty-eight, sixty-one, we were. Okay. Um, we've been afraid about this road for twenty years. To see it, to be honest about it, I would, I would like to see the village bite the bullet. Put the sidewalks on both sides. It's going to narrow the road. But in the long run, the other side of Brewery Road, once you go past the other roads down there in the intersection, but it's going to all need it. Everybody's going to start looking at it. Our house is a big house. I do believe we're not going to be the last owners of that house, and I expect kids to move in there. And it's dark. We don't, we don't get any percreators now. Our neighbors across the street have three little kids running around for whatever reason, but they're there. They've got their signs out, slow down the traffic. I know it's a big loss. I'm going to lose a lot from that front here. I got two big old trees that are going to go. Once it gets to our area. If the people on top of the hill can ever work that out, there's going to be three hundred and fifty houses up there. Approximately. They're going to have kids. We get kids up there riding bicycles. Now we got kids to try riding skateboards, but that doesn't work because the road's so crappy. But people would use it. And we see people right down the block all the time, and now we got Halloween coming up again. And people are going to want to use. J I C, well, they're trucking around quite a bit. Everybody does it, you know, bite the bullet. You're going to have to use it and do it sometime or another. Long as you're doing it. So good luck.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else like to speak on any issue? All right, I am closing the public comment section. We are at the consent agenda upon request of any trustee. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Do I have a motion?
Having a motion to approve the consent.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. We're at discussion. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. We're at report, village officers. I have nothing to report at this meeting. Vice President.
Just since this week is Oktoberfest in Crest Point, but I think the week's the offering grass today. How did that go? Did it? What about good job? I didn't even hear it. Good job. And then I think Saturday, it is between the auxiliary ladies at nineteen oh-nine and then on Montage, they're going to have a Hulk of Ammon.
All right, thank you. Other trustees? Andy?
Yeah, Sustainability Committee decided about looking into the details of meat certification for the upcoming Hill at all. And I just wanted to let everybody know October first is the Edin Cradwell Memorial Invite that's taking place at place in Liverpool in memoriam of the three boys who were killed in an accident last fall. And so we've been working with the village to help prepare the course, and we get a shout out from my accident and parking wreck for that. And so I encourage everybody to come out and support, donate money if you can, and if you're really into it. Don't you mind if you want us to go?
Well, it's not an actual false country.
It will be a meet after that. So we can run this first, and then
Okay, there are a ton of people here Sunday.
Yeah. Come back. Give it up to Brian Fennell as well to bring a lot of people to the front.
Very good. Anybody else?
Tony. Yeah, Parks and Rec, the pickleball courts are up and running. They're seemingly hit countywide, not just within the village. There is a pickleball court army party October third from four to six. And that Parks and Rec are looking for some help for their after-school program, two thirty to five. That's all I got.
All right, village administrator.
I had a couple of quick updates. I just wanted to give a brief update on the crossing guard situation, which was discussed at the last board meeting. Chief Tony said that that position has been filled, but we will have a discussion later in tonight's meeting to talk about the pay for the position. I wanted to also let you know that I recently had some conversations regarding the USDA Community Facilities Loan Program. I'm still doing a little bit of research on that. I have a contact who I may be able to invite to a future board meeting to give us a little bit more information about that. That possibility for funding the future Village Hall Police Station project. So more to come on that front. And we just recently had a village tour of the De Forest Village Hall, which was a great tour. We learned a lot about the different things that we might want to incorporate into our, our visioning for our Village Hall project here from that visit. So that was a very worthwhile endeavor, and hopefully the first of a few to come. And the last thing, I just wanted to let you know that there's, you know, a number of things, discussions related to the budget going on internally here. And I was hoping that, you know, at some point in the near future, I can have some discussions and or invite trustees into have conversations with me to just talk about some of the upcoming personnel-related issues that we're going to have within the village or what I'm foreseeing. So just have a discussion about the best ways we'd like to have that handled going forward.
All right, thank you. Are there any other reports? Bobby?
So I did a pleasure of attending a conference last week on Thursday and Friday. The theme focused on communicating financial information, so that was fully beneficial to me. One of the major takeaways I got was the importance of trust and transparency. Staff and board members need to work to build trust with one another, and a good way to do that is being bi-transparent. So one of the presenters explained that sometimes boards or the public may feel that the finance department may be hiding information or withholding information. And this is because that, you know, I usually just provide a high-level overview or summary of information so that you guys don't get bogged down in the details. So it's the presenter's motive that the key is to communicate with you guys that the details are available. All you have to do is ask, you know, send me an email, phone call, make an appointment to stuff, and I'm more than happy to explain things in better detail or provide you more information. So ideally, you know, I would provide you with the information early enough before meetings that you'd have time to look it over and get your questions to me beforehand. That way that we're all prepared, we're all informed. And then lastly, I was reminded at the conference that everyone here, you know, board members and staff, we're all on the same team, and we do share a common goal. We're here to provide services to the community across planes and to the good fiscal stores of taxpayer money. We will not always agree on everything, but it's important to maintain a respectful environment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Andy, and Cody, I've seen talking about the user and first migration. I just wanted to quick give a special thank you to James Crowe. So one of the fathers, one of the runners donated money and/or services to help with the cross-country course for everything that's on village property and school property. I get a little some tune come out and do some special renovations to some of the areas, aerating, going down the sea and so. All that was donated by him, I'm service to you. So I would be able to get out there and roll the cords today. So we're not considered good.
Thank you. All right, we are going to general business. First one, discussion and possible action, Glacier Ridge acceptance, letter, town, and engineering. Brian?
For this item, there was a side yard, backyard, drainage area on the original development, which there's some of those that worked around the times. Four years ago. And on all large developments like this, the building requires the developer to hold any fire and security to make sure they finish the plans that are contemplated. So village has been requiring that whole consistently. There's one last bridge, grading and piping that was completed in the fall. And we recommended waiting until the summer and make sure the grass came in and everything. That is complete, grass is done, landscaping is done, all wonders. Happy enough, I don't really have it on a plan ready, but I think they did a nice job. So we are recommending village file a little acceptance on those includes. So we are recommending village file a little acceptance on those includes. And um. There are any thinking questions?
And that would release their twenty seven foul.
And fully release their bond, yes.
Judy?
So they didn't do a letter credit, like rather than a letter credit, they just provided a bond?
Correct, yes. They require financial surety, right? They choose bond as opposed to letter credit more.
So they're doing that for just releasing the bond. And you feel like everything's good?
Yes, yes.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'm making motion to accept the ridge, acceptance later time, country engineers propose that this.
All right, I have a motion and second discussion. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed same. Don't move. Thank you. All right, next one is discussion and possible action brewery road reconstruction design plan, counting country. Brian?
We can get right back and grab my book.
All right.
Logan. Uh, what we got to show the group tonight is a. Kind of consolidation of the comments from the previous meetings and efforts by the. Michael to solicit input, uh, pros and cons and different. Options at our last meeting with the community, we. Overview four different options that were different cocktails of widths. Uh, pedestrian amenities with side. And after getting all those. Meeting with uh, village staff internally. At our staff meetings, and it is still built down to what you see here. Uh, starting from the south, uh, we're. Nine uh, features. I should be clear for this for the folks listening behind and at home. Uh, this is not in any way a part of the design. Uh, this is a concept sketch. With some features there. So things like, you know, should a, anything going north of Woffenberg? Super fair question, definitely needs to be answered. Uh, but that's not the intention of this. Uh, this is more to cover some of the big, delicate level. Instraints before we actually do the design. We are. At a point where I would say the 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 project development is probably about fifty to sixty percent. Uh, we've done a lot of work underground, area on sewer, the water main. Uh, some of the drainage, large drainage components like brewery. Three. Uh, and now right at one where we wanna make sure we have our heads on straight with the surface improvements. How wide, which blocks are gonna be? How wide do you, or don't you want pedestrian amenities? Uh. Do we or don't we want certain kinds of, or do you want a community want certain type of traffic calling measures? So that we can actually get going on a real engineering design. Uh, we'd be looking to go to bid with this towards the end of the calendar year. So I would certainly have. A lot of time to iron out some of those.
Can I just add to this question? So and and I don't think uh, the rest of the board knows either since the team comes down. If it's a path, a bike path. The village would be will be responsible for following that. If it's sidewalk, then the individual homeowner are responsible for clearing the sidewalk. Um, so just to clear that.
Yeah, maybe a couple of their uh, quick questions or answers.
Yeah.
Question. Uh, there. There are not intended to be any assessments for this project, but it's currently not having any sense policies. So there will be no charges or costs to these folks. Uh, for the work, the work uh, will will be paid by the village. Um, but that's covered by the, the order of the whole, the sanitary sewer improvements are covered, assuming to renew. Water mains, water utility and service improvements uh, from the general fund and we. Your issue ago, the board talked about potentially committing some of the upper funds to it. So that's where the the dollar come.
Judy?
But we just passed it. So, but you're saying the village would pay for them to put in the sidewalks. So if something happens at sidewalk, now the homeowners have to pay for it.
Oh, that's not what our policy is yet. We have talked about it and you'll be seeing that in November. The actual policy where we had written where it was a fifty percent share of replacement.
But that's not counts?
No. That's not a question. No. Okay, no.
The G D's were.
I've been sitting.
Replacements. Uh, and G D's right, the the concept. Policy is covered just replacements, initial installation would be paid for by.
We like that, so always probably by us.
Right. So, um, I'll give folks a little virtual tune here uh, from twenty thousand feet. Uh, there was a lot of support for a pedestrian amenity. There's a lot of concern about shoveling. Um, so what we got shown here in the orange. Uh, initially on the west and then as you approach Pedestrian Street crossing to the east. And eight foot asphalt path. That would be considered multi-use, be pedestrians and cyclists. Uh, that width is then very, very, very popular, very sufficient for the type of traffic we're contemplating. Using this even with uh, potential of the building up. The inclusion of it on just one single side was informed by a couple of different factors. Uh, one is there's some fairly extreme topography from west to east and then it flops from east to west. Where one side of the corridor is much higher. And you can see that just driving through some steeped driveways. And existing retaining walls there. Like adding, adding a lot of pedestrian amenities requires flat space. In that same corridor and and while the existing street is very wide, forty four and change be wide. Uh, even narrowing it down to the more typical known street width. Does not give us enough space to put in pedestrian amenities on both sides. By staying in that corridor. So one of the nice features of a single side is that it does allow for the project to fit. Generally within the existing footprint of the existing curving gutter. Uh, there are some areas. Uh, most notably north of this that uh, the road corner will be getting wider than it currently is. South of there, uh, we generally try and center the whole cross section. It'd be the street itself with the curves and the path as close as we can being even using footprint to minimize disruption to. The east and west neighbors lawns and also not making it with speed drivers, using speed driveways and speaker. So starting from the south, uh, what we're proposing is a thirty two foot wide street. That would allow for two lines of traffic there comfortably and one side parking. Once you get to Bear Street between Bear and Dennis, uh, we're proposing thirty six feet wide. Which would more comfortably accommodate parking on both sides of the street. Uh, that is the only stretch of this area of brewery road that has drivers on both sides. Uh, it's another unique feature of this corridor is. Uh, we're generally on someone's backyard uh, for most of the project except for that stretch. Uh, then north of Dennis, uh, we go back down to that thirty two foot wide. Corridor with the path flopping there with the proposed or anticipated crosswalk right at Dennis. Will cross the creek with a new culvert. That culvert will be oriented to uh, not require such a hard turn or flow of water. Which uh, also it ends up causing some debris problems and heavy flows. Uh, we are and I need to be careful uh, as it sounds to not include it too much. Uh, not include the brewery fleet crossing underneath. The road too much because of the. Likely outcome of amplifying flooding problems downstream. Uh, so that'll be looked at and permitted independently uh, at D N R to confirm that we're not. Getting too big there. And that area does act as a natural constriction and does actually protect folks downstream from further flows. Then heading north, uh, Woffenberg is somewhere in there would be determinants of the project. Whether or not uh, we wanted to go north. At all or a little, uh, certainly something you can uh, decide later. But for the concept here, we were simply showing transitioning there and going to the. Next property line. That can also be deferred till or if development occurs of the law. Underground, however, we will be setting up the project for extension of superannate water. At least to the northern head of Woffenbergs, like if those each of the needed up the hill, you wanna have a closed intersection. So let us start at the high points and uh, certainly wanted to see if folks. Think about the geometry of it. Um. I do have uh, three speed tables called out more for graphic. Uh, then being committed to them, there have been some concerns about. This being a very straight shot with desire for some traffic calming. The speed tables come with all the things that have already been talked about tonight. Um. They're not super comfortable for residents to drive on, you know, still with the care for them, snow pod drivers don't care for them. Uh, there are some other passive methods that. Tend to be just about as effective uh, without requiring that at home. And and we work on all sorts of things from. Curve radio bump outs at the intersections uh, to. Medium islands, which like a miniature version of what Woffenberg or gas. Uh, those that they just kind of leave it restricted, but traffic calling was something that was discussable at the public meetings and staff. So. Now I should have any. Again, the question room.
Doug, why does the path alternate sides?
Uh. The desire was to have it on the Woffenberg side at the north and. Maybe that's where the neighborhoods are uh, coming across at at uh, Dennis. Was mostly to allow for folks that exit out onto brewery to to get to the path running across the street. There are some pros and cons uh, that either looking or blocking and and then just spending, but that's. That's what we chose.
Cody, is it possible to have that all on the same side or is that the progress here that you're talking about making it difficult?
Um, it is certainly possible. The uh. We would, yes, because it's really, what we're down on paper right now is gonna be a thirty two foot wide street. With a grass strip, three or four feet grass and each feet of grass. So just doing your arithmetic. And we're looking at about a forty five inch foot wide thing. Um, so constructability wise, uh, it's really. The uh. I guess some other considerations they want to think about. Um. Putting the. Putting the path all on, on the one side.
I just see it as, if you're trying to make it safe.
If there's, if there's not a concern for folks, um.
There, there's also no driveway on the left side. Literally our house built the driveway. Because what I was thinking was that the path stayed on the left side of the hallway. And if it ends right near Woffenberg, then that's great natural how people walk. And there's no, no driveways uh, on that side of the street. As you pass them, I wouldn't disagree, but when you get into those backyards with that slope. I feel like if you have the village is gonna be on the hook, the retaining walls there then.
Yes, there would there'd be more walls there, certainly splatter. Um. But on the west on the southern end.
Right, because like those houses between Bear and Valley.
That that driveway just south of there. Let's go a little more back. Now.
Yeah.
That fellow is true.
Right.
Uh, it's already way beyond anything.
Well, my thought is like where the red, the long part is all on the other side, yeah, all out there.
Oh, it's okay.
I was confused there. Yeah, I thought everything on the left side. Yeah, everything on the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, west side.
Yeah, because mostly those are that driveway, like more driveways. I see kids flying down their bike on this side and then just shooting straight across that intersection. Okay. And I know we've mentioned the retaining wall. I guess I, I'm trying to understand if we're within the current roadway. There are no retaining walls now. I'm not sure why is there a need to have a retaining wall then?
Well, um, we're not a hundred percent within the existing roadway.
Oh.
Now, uh, there will be. We haven't done the design yet.
No, no, I just was curious on that.
There's usually a couple feet, uh, but. In the, in the area south of there. A couple feet can make a vertical difference enough that you've gotta have there. Not a ten foot high wooden wall, but if. If the group's kind of calling us around, keep it on the western side.
Yeah, on the west side, it would be more for on the other side of Dennis is where the hill would go where you would hear.
Yeah.
Regular, but I, you know, I don't know. I walked it. It doesn't seem like the hill is at eye, but I'm not an engineer. There, there would be some retaining wall required. It may only be a couple of feet high, but all of those things. Um, at a cost. The other thought was I am in crosswalk there. There is a possibility in future dream of. I'm connecting that point. Uh. Just north of the corridor. To Raspberry Park is a trail along the third street. Um, and that would provide a natural collection point there as well. But overall, the one of the biggest driving factors to move the sidewalk from one side, yeah, little path or you wanna call it. Is the construction cost in this meter. Andy?
Yeah, I, I, I like what Jerry's saying as far as like the potential future of having something along the creek, but I don't think moving it all for the west side. To prove that anyway. Um, and and generally when I drive to the side of the desert, I see people walking down these, around the west side primarily. Which makes sense because everybody's driveways and houses are opening up there on brewery versus it seems to be most of the backs of houses on the other side of the grid. Um, so I, I would personally like to see it along the west side.
Judy?
It's on computer. So wouldn't you rather have it on the left and um. What's east side, only for the fact that there's not too many driveways coming in and all? I mean, if you have it on this side, everyone's pulling in on the sidewalk. For this side, there's no driveways and nobody's pulling in and all.
Well, there's the two and those are the ones that are very stevie and that's the concern.
Yeah, the other way.
Go ahead, Brian.
We're kind of pretty dangerous certainly, but uh, there's also a kind of a desire to, because there'd be one sided parking. What we're proposing, one sided parking south of there and then Dennis. Uh, I like you, you can put the parking on the fewer driveway sign. But uh, because driveways, nailboxes chew up space and chew your spots. Uh, so there, you you generally would like to have pedestrian feature, not a parking side. Of course, I mean, a shoe there, uh, all the people backing out of their driveways, that's probably the question about that. Uh, so it's, it's, it's not a one hundred percent tax improved, but uh. Just in the industry and throughout the village, uh, when you have sidewalks across driveways. It has not been a, a limited problem. And you get a little more functionality for the corridor by. Path on driveways, parking on roads.
And to Judy's point, like I, I hear that and it's like, if you build it, will they help? Because they're already walking up and down, you know, given what they, the routines have been established with outside of the road, the path or. Yeah, that's all I got.
Michael?
So with this design and the expansion of, one of the initial thoughts was trying to keep it inside the existing roadway. Then would be. Then would be avoiding retaining walls, cost maintenance. With this design with the eight-foot path, you foresee a lot of retaining wall, retention wall going up. Because now we're moving, it looks like outside to the north. Especially on that southern part where it gets sloppy down there, because of the outside that existing curb faces.
We we probably have some, I would call it a lot, uh, Jared pointed out would be, I'm anticipating on a range of a quarter to uh high. You know, uh, you gotta, uh, we've got some tricks up. Of course, on how to design a road on hillsides, easy to do. How we probably look at originally, it would be just to, let's assume you all love it. Because designing straight up and see how many retain all of that, how high they are. If we're talking only a quarter to, well, we're probably proposing to shift. Shift the road away from that hillside toward the flat people, which admittedly. Uh, moves the roadway instead of a foot and a half wider on everybody's land. It's three feet wider in this spot because we had that avoid the team long there and you have sixty feet of already. Village property, there's the wish to do, the highlight, uh, but we have them trying to minimize. Grass destruction, but though for retaining all that fifty dollars a square foot, um. The our first step would be let's let's shove them to the south a little bit west, shove them north a little bit east and kind of side it out. That would also introduce some horizontal zigzag, which is not. Didn't actually appear desirable uh along the stretch, so. There. Actually, your short, your short question, the wrong answer is a a few, but we're not nearly far enough to say that's the only option.
Does that has another question?
Sure, and that's about what you're seeing on here, because it's, you know, you have thirty-two, thirty-two feet of curve face to face, that's what I thought.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and uh, so you're seeing about instead of foot and a half of loss on each side with this design in terms of, I mean, in terms of going in the yards. Like going over the current.
Yeah, going over the current, but it's probably that we're going to spread.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, right. So I'm just.
I I think based on two of the neighbors' comments, I think the path is the right way to go. Um, I do think um it makes more sense to me to be on the left side. Um, I also, I I don't appreciate speed bumps. I think uh as a it does damage, it's also causing issues for snowfalling and all kinds of stuff, but I. I think that's where we have to work with our friends and neighbors to try and save them, follow the rules.
I I I I agree with you, but if we're spending this kind of money on that road and we get complaints all the time on speed. I think we have to be traffic calming, but I'm more inclined of putting in small islands or boulevards. Because it's study after study showed as far as you the speed increases, the farther you can see down the road.
Yep.
And that's what a lot of communities are doing, are putting that's.
I'm much more open to those.
Yeah, that way the trucks can still get around and.
No, I don't think there's enough space to warrant you to walk through the Venice, I don't see that as an issue when I walk. You know, the speed in the middle of that small area and I'm in favor of the other measures on that.
There are several. And traffic calming is what uh we've been hearing at meetings, uh, so. If not speed table or speed home, speed bump, we can look at that term. Uh, so it's either narrowing to field vision by bringing the edges in. And oftentimes you can't do that, if you can't park next to an intersection anyway. So you instead of having air there, you you neck the road even down further. Um, or you do the same by putting a boulevard, old island pedestrian haven in the middle. Um, that's probably another design detail that will work out. Particularly if if you're headed towards path all along the west. Um, you probably want to look at at least planning for crosswalks, please. And uh putting in those, I call them bumpings, bump outs, curb bumps. Uh, marrying the road and let's shorten the. Four and a half distance, yeah, travel or wheelchair on individual to roll. So those are, those are very popular and don't come with the.
All right, Michael?
So now I know I had a path of for village clearance, but if a sidewalk was done, that would reduce that down to five feet, which would be a loss of three, which. Would keep it pretty much inside the current existing curve, just using math like that.
You got it, it would save you three feet, um, though if if the communities. Got interest in uh accommodating cyclists. The uh, if we put, I I would suggest a quite a little more official for that and the uh. Destruction, existing grass beyond existing curves, it'd still be fair and normal. Um, in order to get every increase utility of of that wider surface. Given the number of folks and potential cyclists. Every time from either the Woffenburg or now Woffenburg plus. And they're crossing.
Cody, was it the eight-foot sidewalk that made it village maintained versus?
Yeah, it's a trail, yeah, we call it bike trail versus. Yeah, that was the inversion at the last meeting, we had, we've been just a few comments with a lot of people. You have a lot of people along this direction road that don't want a sidewalk just because they don't want to shovel it, it's pretty much. Um, the major issue, not talking about potential shortening of front yard, but the shoveling aspect. So it was brought up the idea that we put in a made the path and it's supposed to maintain. Then you're still able to put in a pedestrian use, but you're relieving the residents of the maintenance. Right, exactly, so that's, and so that's going to sow the maintenance then of the village clearing that drives a village cost. Possible retain retaining walls, maintenance, et cetera, it sort of adds in other variables.
Well, let me just, I wouldn't have. Well, it does because there's more miles for them to plow, but on the other hand, you're putting in bike safety item. Versus putting the bikes on the road with a road that's thirty-two feet. Versus getting them off the road, it's safer for bikes and pedestrians, but correct.
But bikes can still ride on it, really.
Well, sure, they can.
But I would actually say for more efficient down the trail versus a sidewalk.
All right, uh, Brian, what what is the minimum you'd like tonight and the maximum?
Actually, if I may, I I break this into several decisions, decisions to me either head now or if you want to make. Uh, first would be the width. Um. Scheme, I'll call it, uh, thirty-two feet south of there, thirty-six feet between there and Venice and thirty-two feet north of Venice. That'd be my first. Uh, next would be. Path, yes, no?
Okay.
And if yes, whatever like. And that's really all I would need for. Need to get caught out on design and get some more detailed questions for the.
Right, I'm gonna do motions, all right, so the first one is like a motion uh to do the width of the road. Which is thirty-two to thirty-six to thirty-two. I'll make our motion.
Let's start out with the feeling.
I said uh the right sixty feet.
We're not changing that, you know, it would be the width of the road, so it's. So I have a motion to uh to go thirty-two to Venice and then Venice to Woffenburg. Thirty-six and then north of Woffenburg, thirty-two. So do I have a second? I'll say, all right, I have a motion and a second.
You said it wrong, I'm sorry.
Oh, did I?
Yes. You said thirty-six from up to Woffenburg and then thirty-two or Woffenburg.
Okay, isn't that what it is, Brian?
There would be thirty-six there to Venice.
Thirty-six there to Venice, okay.
And then north of Venice, thirty-two, okay, south of there, thirty-two.
All right, is that all right, Doug? All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, you know, the more I look at this and thinking about the residents, I like the alternative that even though it's not. Contiguous and and nice and clean, I mean, the the residents around the east side of brewery. Are essentially walking down a mountain to take care of a potentially a sidewalk or a path, we don't know where it is yet. Um, you know, so if it's a path, I would I would be in favor of keeping it on one side, it's a sidewalk, I'd like the alternating scenario, so.
All right, but right now the motion is, we'll we'll get to that, the motion right now is we have the the width of the roadway. Cameron?
I don't understand why width has to get different.
Because of the existing road.
I don't know, I'm not the engineer.
Have to, uh, the uh village standard street would be thirty-six feet wide, ready for a a southern to the any new southern to the thirty-six feet wide period. Uh, that's driven by two end of traffic, two eleven-foot traffic lanes and two seven-foot part, part of both sides. And you'd also generally have driveways. For a reason, a bit unique in that they're in long stretches where there are on drive plates on long on one side or the other. So partly because of the feeling from the community being that they're only need parking both sides. Multiplied by desire to keep the width as minimal as is practical. Uh, resulted in, well, if you only have driveways on both sides, let's just go with thirty-two. That would allow for still parking for folks who have driveways on there. It would accomplish the village goal, narrower streets for slower speeds, less runoff, you know, less cost, of course. Uh, and then that leaves that middle block there, Venice where I can do have driveways both sides, some of the folks. One of the folks that lived in that block was here at one of the meetings and they indicated a real desire to, what we. I want to park in front of my house, so that was a compromise there as to widen it back out to standard width. And then once we get north of Venice, here back and drive with on one side.
Right, I don't.
So you've said though thirty-six stated the standard village road, but in our new developments, haven't they been shrunk down to like twenty-eight feet? Because we then have swelled with sidewalks on both sides and the newer developments isn't the road not thirty-six, I thought they got narrow.
No, there's a, there is a, that one loop on Creek Crossing, is narrower, that's a. A little bit huge and then it's got the P V B area and all the other streets are still thirty-six.
From curbs.
Yeah, it's still, what you're talking about is that loop there at Angelay and we put no parking, yeah, put no parking on it.
There's the same with the back and all that stuff, street plus the ditches, plus the sidewalks. You end up with a seven, two and a half, but right, well, it's quite a bit more space devoted to public infrastructure on.
Right, I think the way the waves that just like that the street size switched off.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All whole same, okay, so now we're gonna talk to and say, do we want a sidewalk or a trail? So let's start with a motion to do a trail.
I'll make the motion to do the trail.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to build a trail, an eight-foot trail, open up for discussion. Judy?
Is that the only options or none? Is it?
What?
Trail or sidewalk or none?
But you could vote, no against the vote and that would be a no vote.
Yeah, and you could do nothing, yeah.
I mean, that's always an option.
I think it's based on resident impact and also um efficiency and lots of maintenance, so I'm not one to do that.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I mean, it's aligned with sustainability goals to try and impact this for the more livable, bikeable, walkable city and.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same?
Same.
Okay. So now we have to decide on the trail that we wanted on the west side, east side, or a mixture of both. The west side is the side with the homes, the east side is the side with the hills on it. Just so we're all in the same. Just in a very safe, so now that we decided we're going to do a trail, then a village will be taking up the maintenance for that. Yes, we'd be, yes, correct. Okay, it's Michael?
Andy, just to address what you were talking about, during the visiting sessions, we spoke that we wouldn't put a sidewalk like in the backyard of those houses. People wouldn't be able to maintain them, they didn't talk about it on the other end, which is kind of why the idea of a foot blocking exists and to keep it on people's backyards. If it was going to be sort of before turned into a path, which would be village.
Thank you, Michael, that's a good point, that would remain driving force.
Yeah, that was why, that was why those ideas.
Thank you. All right, so what are people's thoughts, west side, east side, next?
My thoughts, west side.
Say all west and all west?
You're gonna have a village maintainer and a snowblower or whatever, be able to just drive them right down it. To save time, not having to cross, people don't have to cross the street.
Also, your complaints about right outside the corner here, right by Judy's house, because you gotta kind of, you know, go around the park. Even you already get to the school and stuff, then it's it's all kind of split and you gotta jump around, so yeah, I think keeping it on one side is ideal.
I mean, I'm just trying to imagine myself on brewery, I park myself across the street for whatever reason. And then take all myself across a bike path to get to my house, it just seems like it's a little intense.
Well, and this is just current, I walk that probably four times a day, it's rare there's cars parked on the east side. Almost everybody in the driveway or on the west side, it's rare that you hit anybody to the backyard.
But if we put up the trail on the west side, wouldn't there be no parking there or not?
Yeah, you, we're gonna.
And all the parks would be on the east side at that point, so then you would have to walk across, not only the road, but the bike path. And just generally from a safety perspective, you're not gonna have a lot of driveways for the vast majority of this portion if you put it on the east side. By the one, two, three, four driveways versus. A dozen and some change on the on the west side. So it might add some cost to the village with retaining walls, but I think in the long and short of it, neighbors are gonna be happy because they don't have to constantly back in and out. Driveway trying to figure out if they're gonna hit a bike or not, which they do on burning right now as well, but. I just think for for all intents and purposes, it just seems unfair and fit to do it that way. Then you have people being able to park on the west side, get out of their cars, not have to worry about hitting somebody in the bike path, um, that.
Your people's thoughts?
I like the um, the east side a lot of the way. That is three driveways versus thirteen, we just counted.
Brian, you wanted to say something?
I, we will lose about too many parking stalls. But and people park in front of homes because the driveways uh, we can't run a firm price, sure. Mail carrier tend. Prefer to have a mail box on the down parking side, so that. So you're picking it side, then the people try to cross the road either.
But I think they do now somewhat.
Well, they do, but are they gonna be moved, we don't know where they're.
Yeah, and all of the people that are on the hill.
No, I think like the bird glass, I think there are.
Yeah, yeah, some of those houses, it's definitely on the other side, they'll walk across and that hill coming down, they're over there. Yeah, they are, I guess it's. They're already crossing roads to get their mail.
All right, Mike, you wanted?
Yeah, just the the one thing that Stan talked about is well, I'm meeting moving snow, if you put the trail on the east side. Uh, you will get snow, you'll go up, which means three months later and then have to get it off. The other thing is, uh, you're gonna have quite a bit of shade along that path line, so when you do have snow. We had some uh during the day, so you drift down onto that path, but it's enough.
Doug, I did, one of the reasons I like the west side as well is, you know, the ones on the hills there, that's all the actions. I I nobody on those houses has been parked there even though they're. I, I, nobody on those houses has been parked there even though they're something. Just a little bit, so I, I think to me the most efficient way to keep it cleared and safe, uh, it would be on the west side, the whole.
All right, well, can I have a motion, please? Make a motion to have an eight foot path on the west side, the whole length of the path, I'll sorry about motion. All right, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
I have a question with saying the whole length of the project, does that go all the way to the end of the village property, like would go all the way? You see, or does it end like at lock?
Where the red dot is, because they said they were gonna go out into their, their foot sewer and water, right? So just all the way to the end, it's feasible.
Right, but I was saying, this, yeah, I think when we get the project process and stuff, we can look at that, yeah. I think the main thing is to get it on the west side, which I think is consistent with the development farther up the hill, the road, the path is gonna be on that side. So that would connect naturally to what was planned uh, on that for that development. All right, why don't we do a roll call on this one?
Justin Paul.
Yes.
Fussy her.
I'm abstaining.
Fussy Borland.
Yes.
Fussy Brunner.
Yes.
Fussy Brad.
Yes.
Fussy Galbert.
Oh, man, um.
Yes. Doesn't like them.
Yes. All right, is that what you need then, Brian?
So again, um, we'll be getting work on a map and getting Brian's in and we'll be done in touch.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have anything else for me or any?
Uh, no, I think we're pretty good. Yeah, no. Thank you, yeah, you too.
Thanks, Brian, thanks.
Okay, we're at uh, discussion and powerful action Northwest Dane Senior Service twenty twenty three funding. Yeah, yeah, I know, and and I'm the one that placed it on the agenda here and this, and I'll tell you why. Um, it was my understanding when we approved, we approved an amount and it's tied to population. What what I didn't understand is why that increases during the year, which happened in this year where we approved a budget amount. And then it's what we spent has been higher, so I'm trying to figure out, is it that you redo population a couple of times a year or? I don't, I'm not sure, I guess that's why I was wondering going into twenty twenty three, if this is gonna be a solid number or it's a moving number and then why would it be a moving number if we're done on population?
It shouldn't be moving, so first of all, I'm probably one for those of you I haven't met, I'm the executive director of Northwest Dane and I can give you Northwest Dane one oh one. And then I can address that, so, and then Bobby can probably comment on how we work those numbers as well. So first of all, um, for those of you that may not know, Northwest Dane Senior Services is an independent five oh one C three um, independent, um, meaning we're not under one of the municipalities such as maybe um, Middleton or Mount Cora. And so we contract then with Dane County to provide a nutrition and a case management program. Those are two of the programs funded by Dane County, Dane County splits us all up. So there's uh, twelve, what they refer to as focal points, there's more senior centers, because there's also the city of Madison, there's city of Verona, there's some of them that um, although supported by their municipality are not doing the service, so Verona, for example, does not necessarily do the meals for the town of Verona, things like that, so um, long and short, uh, Dane County provides about a third of our budget, so about three hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget um, for Northwest Dane approximately on any given year since we moved to Cross Plains, uh. About a hundred and ten thousand is what we're looking at for twenty twenty three um, from the county. So then the municipality support um, for twenty twenty three, you're looking at the twenty twenty one annual report right there. Um, right around twenty sixty three thousand, sixty four thousand, um. We did a census, so some of your numbers have changed, so that's part of the answer. Because some of, when I do these budget asks, I start them, always kick it off, it seems like for eleven years, this is my eleventh budget year with the town of Cross Plains, and so that starts a nod, so I usually can go off of um, what your website tells me your population is. Um, but sometimes people that are working within the municipality know that's not accurate, you had um, people leave your municipality. I was literally at the town of Maisel me- meeting one year and when I gave them the contract, they said, no change that a baby was born today. So then they updated my six dollars. So there is some of that going on that I don't always know your exact number, and then um, we for the last uh, three years, so in twenty nineteen, Northwest Dane purchased the rest of the building. So when we moved to Cross Plains in March of two thousand fifteen, we only owned eighteen thirty seven. In twenty nineteen, we bought the rest of uh, the building, which is eighteen forty one, hence we own the entire building. Uh, some of you may know the parking rep, uh, the recreation programs, um. We, because of the financial support of the village, uh, we partner with all of you to do that program in the upstairs of eighteen forty one. Um, a win-win for any intergenerational program, unfortunately COVID hit during, right when we were really rocking and rolling with getting that program going, but um, so then the rest of that three hundred and sixty thousand dollar budget, um, about ninety thousand comes from our adult day program. Um, last in twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty one, you can see the adult day program was sixty four thousand. We're, we're on target to bring in about ninety thousand this year for twenty twenty two. Um, and then the rest of that all comes from donations, uh, personal donations, grants, fundraising, and our thrift shop, which some of you have been to the thrift shop, so in twenty nineteen, when we purchased that building, um, we said, okay, what can we do to bring in some revenue beside the adult day program? The adult day program is primarily a private pay program, we do have scholarship funding, we have um some grants and things that have been able to help lower income people still be able to utilize that program. Sunny seconds, um, you can see in twenty twenty one, um, luckily brought in fifteen thousand five hundred, because that replaced some of our, our two fundraising efforts through COVID that had to be canceled. Um, and it's really um, on target to exceed that this year. Um, expense wise, we were a little under because eight months out of the year, we were short staffed, so that was challenging, um, just like any small business. Um, we, we lost some uh, two long-term employees that retired and it had taken us about eight months to uh, find replacements. We have found replacements, that's now in July, and of course, some of them, um, just like any small business, the hourly salaries are different now than they were probably when we found the original twenty twenty one budgets. Um. So in a nutshell, uh, the rest of the programs besides case management, nutrition, there's um activities, the adult day program, transportation coordination, um, volunteered um, opportunities, activities and wellness. And all of that now is really starting to grow again. Um, we were an essential service, we never closed our doors, we continue to um, maintain, we are definitely seeing some changes though because of that. It's taken a little bit longer than we had hoped to get people back to Northwest Dane, but it's taking a lot more time and we have to go into the homes. Um, the boarding situations, the housing situations, the mental health issues are um, definitely increasing. Um, and uh, as I think as one of the gentlemen said, uh, people aren't moving right now, so what are they doing? They're aging. So they're needing more of our services, so our case management numbers, of course, are increasing and we still only have one case manager, we can only get so many hours out of the day, but um, we're doing our best to meet the needs and Dane County, for those of you that did not realize, there was um, money put out for mental health. So the mental health money is that Dane County is um, doing, there's two clinical mental health social workers that all of us at the senior centers can access and use to help us with some of those hard pieces of mental health. Vicki serves on the boarding task force, we are dealing with um, a couple, you had one in the village, um, that was really a very, very sad situation and was very, very time consuming. Um, you know, we finally got them into assisted living, we're getting their needs, um, but that was challenging, uh, people matter, the whole nine yards, uh, suicidal tendencies, um, male nutrition. Um, so those kind of cases can be very draining on staff, um, and sometimes we as staff even need some mental health counseling um, because of the challenges we face when we go into somebody's homes. Um, so the ask, um, then our board historically has just come up annually when we do our budgets to figure out um, what can we ask, and we service nine municipalities, so those of you um, that may not realize Northwest Dane has uh, both town and village of Cross Plains, town and village of Black Earth, town and village of Maisel Mady, town of Berry, town of Mont, town of Ross Berry. So about a hundred and ninety two square miles, um, so plus the parts of our mobile meal drivers in winter and. So we figure out what, what is fair to ask each of the municipalities, how do, how do we do it on a per person, well, that could fluctuate at any given time, so um, I can tell you that there's eighty people from Cross Plains using our services today, so then if I try to put a dollar sign for that, um, you could next week have a hundred people, you could have sixty people. Um, so how do we make that fair for all the nine municipalities, we just do it for dollar um, we're having. And so in the past, we've kind of filled in that number on population, um, and more recent, especially last year, when I'm emailing everything and said, I'm just gonna leave that, that spotlight in your clerk or whoever is helping with that population number, you can fill that in for me. So that's probably where there's been some miscommunication, or it looks like, appears that it's different. Um, the six dollar ask came um, three years now, uh, we are not increasing that ask for twenty twenty three. Um, the newest program and and many of you probably have seen us trotting around is the cycling without age, that was completely paid for by donations and grants, um. The biggest chunk of it coming from Bader Philanthropies, who's partnered um, with us in our adult day program for years since I, I've been here. Some big, big grants that we've gotten from them, so I don't see that um, we need to really um, ask more funding. We need to maintain what we're doing, be good at what we're doing and um, continue to build on what we have. Um, we're able to hopefully, as long as we can still maintain this budget where it's at, I don't see too much changing. Um, that hence why we are not increasing our ask and hopefully all of the municipalities can continue to support. Now, historically, we have a couple municipalities that have been problem children. Um, one of them being the village of Maisel Mady and the other the township of Black Earth. Um, knock on wood, uh, we have been able to fundraise enough to still support um, those clients, because they are the people that suffer. Um, but with our staffing and the increase in some of the needs, um, this year they have found out from me that if indeed they do not uh, do their fair share, we will be tracking their hourly and they will only get what the county is giving for their two programs and they will be cut off right then and there, that once those hours are gone, they're gone. And primarily that is case management, um, I've included Michelle Doolin, our supervisor and all of that. I will not cut out meals, everybody will be able to get a meal, we will not cut um, nutrition from anyone. Um, big chunk of those dollars come from older reference act, but the county um, does want a case management program. We probably have to fundraise of that program about another thirty thousand, they give us approximately sixty some thousand, and it costs about ninety thousand to run that program. So then you take the population, you can do the math, if Maisel Mady's population's eighteen hundred, I'm gonna tell you how much my case management is an hour and boom, and I can tell you right now in a couple of months, it'll be done. If they don't step up to it. Which leaves us more time for people that do smart. Heads on, all of the village.
All right, thank you, that, I think that answers my question, and I think what we just need to do is whatever our number is, that's it, we pull them to.
Yeah, like I said, Nick, what's the population thing, do we look at the population of today, put that number in the budget?
Right, I don't think, I, I don't wanna get into the business every week looking at who moves out, who passes away, who comes into the house.
Typically, I'm gonna look at when you sign your contract, what was your population?
Thank you.
Go back and, and we will look at that then in twenty twenty four.
Thank you, that's all, I guess that's all I would ask, let's just get the number, that's the number for the year.
Be on it and that's.
All right, good.
We got the question.
No, they're part of the budget, I just, I just saw when I was reviewing the budget, I saw this increase on what we budgeted to what we were spending, and I just didn't know if it's based on population, if they were doing it every month or?
No, no, and you typically write us one check, we get a, we usually get actually from all the municipalities, sometimes we even get them in December already. We'll have all of that funding, we don't bill it, not good if that's what you want, we have quick books, but usually um, the municipalities, they plan their budget, they cut the checks right away in the beginning and, you know, then we allocate that out for the rest of the year.
That's exactly what we're.
Yeah, so number, numbers of significance, um, just real quickly, um, you really the big one here, nutrition, of course, in twenty twenty one very minimal onsite nutrition was coming into Northwest Dane, we're already gonna hit um, at the end of our nutrition year about nine thousand, so we've done fifteen hundred meals already. Um, more in twenty twenty two, transportation is still a little bit of a challenge, just because a lot of our volunteers have not come, come back. Um, they, they are weary of having to someone in their car with them that goes, um, R S V P that coordinated the insurance and things too for transportation, um. They, for some volunteers, it's really hard to meet those um, policies to wipe everything down, I think, because some of our people are older to begin with, they're, they're just trying to donate their time. COVID's made it difficult for some of them that are more vulnerable to continue to volunteer, so our volunteer numbers did come down, but they're increasing. Um, and great volunteers that we have at the first store, it really gave people a different way to give back to the community, um. Sunny seconds, um, I, I think there's just people that they're, they like to volunteer to first store versus volunteer to take care of the older folks, so um, to them, that's a little more shiny and and fun. Um, and the community's been very, very generous with their donations to us, so um, those of you that may not know Sunny, so everything is donation in and we don't price things, so it's donation out, so yes, reality could be that somebody could afford something, could be stealing from us, but I can tell you right now, the majority of people are probably, probably more generous and they're making up for those and, and there's karma, so. If they're gonna steal, they can steal from QuickTrip, they're gonna steal from Northwest Dane, they, they're gonna steal, right? So um, we hope that people are just giving what they can afford, and if somebody really, really need, um, they, they can come and, and so if you know anyone that, you know, is just down and out, we, we have a lot of stuff and um, we partnered with Millie's, um, Amy's been wonderful. Um, letting us go to estate sales and do pickups there, and so we, we get those things and she helped us put our new flooring in, uh, along with a friend of mine, so um, some of the groups are all coming back, so the Golden Ageers are starting to come back, um, the Carter groups, the Bingo, um. And then we got to think, every Saturday in December is rented for holiday parties, so we really are trying to be a community resource, not just a senior center, so a lot of people are using this space for other things, which is great. So, any other questions or concerns?
Did you have a question? I thought you were raising.
I wasn't gonna mention um, the CP rec, you don't charge them anything for them.
Because we do not charge, once in a while, um, there, there's something that they're doing separately or like, I, I can share like the petting zoo. Like we, Northwest Dane didn't pay for that, that was part of your budget and we benefited from that, so those are win-win, um, great intergenerational.
For him over there.
It is wonderful, um, so those kind of activities, if, if Rex already got that built into their budget and we could capitalize on that, that's huge for us, because it, I mean, Brian was at that.
Cause I mean, Brian was at that event and, and we could have been there for hours. Those clients were just loving it and watching the little kids every day come off the bus. Some of our most challenging clients just sit in the window and watch them. And you know, maybe it's just a little wave, but that just made their day and it makes a difference.
All right. Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Alrighty.
Alrighty. All right. Discussion and possible action on approval of the Ziegler CSL. Larry, you wanna come up?
Sure.
Answer any questions anybody has? This has gone through plan and has passed unanimously. Does anybody have any questions?
I can make a motion.
All right. Why don't you make a motion then?
The motion to accept the Ziegler CSL.
No, that's exactly what we're looking for. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All hold same. So move. Thank you. Have a good one. Yep. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding village grant policy. Cameron, I wanna thank you for putting that together. So let's why don't we just go with a motion to start with and then we can get into discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Cross Plains Grant Policy as proposed. I'll start with it.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Open up for discussion.
I'll just say I didn't do anything fancy here. I copied and pasted Jay's and I tried to just take what we talked about the last village board meeting and incorporate it and making sure that we were doing what village staff already kinda had going on and just codifying it. And then I sent this to all of the department heads via email and just asked what they thought. I didn't get any concerns. So Chief Tony and all the rest have reviewed this and said, oh, okay.
I, I thought it was done very nicely. I appreciate it. The only, and I'm gonna, it's not enough for me. I'm, I'm gonna support this. Under grants, I, I don't have any problem with that. I just am wondering if at some point, should the board at least be notified that it's happening? So, and I'm just gonna use, let's say they write a grant for something and all of a sudden it's in the village, people are gonna ask us, you know, where'd that come from? Why you did it? And we're gonna look and say, I don't know what you're talking about. So I'm just wondering if there's something that can be in there at some point that the board knows, maybe at the point of award that it happened? Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, that's our opportunity to take credit for all the hard work that our staff did. Right? We don't know. It's supposed to be something we did.
Well, I'm not, I'm just looking at, it's, it's an information, it's knowledge thing. Chief?
Yeah, I, I wonder if this could be during Brian's report. I think that everybody should be, uh, whether it be administrative, know what we're involved in. Oh, awesome. So then do the reports, they're applying for this, they're at this process, this is what they've got.
That, that would work.
I'm for that. No problem.
All right. I, I don't think we need to change the policy, but that, that to me is a step that would make sense and you meet with your staff.
Yeah.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All hold same. So move. Thank you. All right. Discussion and possible action on Act sixty-seven. This is the carryover from last month, remember? I brought up that currently conditional use permits are all handled by the Plan Commission. Cause that's what we're under the understanding that the state statute required. I later found out that that's not the case. I brought it back. So really the option here is state statute and what our planner and attorney says is we have to have two meetings. There has to be two meetings on these conditional use. So basically what, it could be both done at a plan. If you guys wanna be involved in this process, I think what only makes sense is plan would do the conditional, not the conditional, but the conceptual part of it, give feedback. We would run the public hearing and then make the vote. Otherwise, it can stay as the ordinance has where the Plan Commission does everything. So what are people's thoughts? Judy?
I think that the planning does the first half and then we do the second bit. Otherwise, we're gonna get asked about it anyways. You know, if it's something major, they're gonna come to the board and ask, why did you vote that way? So I do think that we should have the final call.
Michael?
I will say that I agree with that. A lot of people might just check village board agendas, see what's going on. Sometimes they aren't all knowing that Plan Commission is doing this, even though their public hearing has to be posted, et cetera, et cetera. But it does sometimes eventually roll up to the elected officials, not that disrespecting any Plan Commission thing. But sure, but, but me go and say, but we get asked questions.
I don't think the Plan Commission is going to fight at all, turning over the public hearing and all the things that go with it. At all. So I, that is not a worry that anybody should have. So Cameron.
One con of this, it's not a big one, but last, the last planning committee meeting, we had to have two meetings and we were turning around something pretty quick because they were looking at our supplies. This is gonna limit people a little bit because we're not, it's gonna be hard to get this group together. It's not a big deal, but.
No, you, you, you're correct. That will be, there, it, it's correct. That could slow it down, no doubt about it.
But I mean, they'll catch them like once and then you get five years.
No, no, but, but no, like I say, it's just that there's a lot of procedural things. It's, it's a time commitment. That, that's to me, you know, I mind, I don't really have a strong feeling one way or the other. It's just that it's going to add more to our agenda here. And it's something that to me, I can't bump to the next meeting because it's not fair to the people doing it. So it just, it just adds something that could be time consuming for this group, but that's all.
No questions. Sorry. Did Sonia then come to this meeting?
Uh, no, she, well, it depends on what it is. She would be at the conceptual because that's where we would lay out things that we think Ts need to be crossed and Is need to be dotted. We may want her here just, it depends on the issue. If it's done like we did where everybody's kinda for it, where you get into problems is when there's the conflict. And now you're having people basically get to question each other and challenge each other. I don't think any of us are experts, so then we probably want her because she kinda understands the zoning and everything else.
So we break, we, we invite her.
Yeah, if it's one of those issues that is not a slam dunk. There's a lot of technical questions that could come up. Alrighty, then I need a motion to change. Well, no, we just have to gonna do, we're gonna do a public hearing and everything because it's a change of ordinance. So, okay, I hear what you do. We'll, we'll modify the ordinance and bring it back. Cause there's no, whatever we approve it.
Well, right, you're just approving the moving into the village thing, but you're just saying engage the attorney to start working on it.
No, I think Jay just needed like.
I just need to know where, and it seems that you want it here. We'll go through and I'll try to find sample one. Or I mean, we really just have to change, put the one that we do the first meeting and then change everything after that. That's Plan Commission to the report. I mean, I think we can't change the process. That's state statute. It's just, who does it? So it's, it might not be that bad in changing of the ordinance, but we might just wait for the ordinance. Otherwise, we're gonna be coming back numerous public hearings. All right, got it. All right. Number seven, discussion and possible action, village pickleball court reservation policy. Anybody got any questions for Mike on it?
Just one title I was gonna put down there. So just stating in here that the policy would be reviewed by the Parks Recreation Conservancy Committee that part of each January. We would just look this over and change this policy each January.
Okay.
Just quickly.
Go ahead.
Have you been, have you people asked if they can reserve this?
A lot. Yeah, I've had a number of people ask to reserve the courts. Already had a group of sixteen come every Thursday from two to four. So that's gonna be, that obviously takes up all the courts spending their time.
And they wanna make sure they have it.
It's just that, correct. A lot of times we follow pickleball, uh, definitely play at or around the same competition. So with someone that's not really good or someone that's not good at all, they like, they have kind of big groups, kind of that like to stick with each other and play.
Judy, do you have a question?
Okay, and I'm afraid I'm gonna call. But okay, so it's ten dollars and they can only reserve it online?
Reserve it online or in person?
Or in person. And that's when, when we're open. So if it's a Saturday and nobody's over there, I can grab over there.
Yeah, so, so we'll end up having something like this. So have like a schedule up on, so we'll have a kiosk that sits there and then we'll have this up. So it'll say open play is during this time. So you're gonna be able to reserve, let's say, on Mondays from eight to noon. That's open play no matter what. So people are coming to play. The time slots that are open, meaning that you could come and reserve it for that time if you have a group that wants it. Now, like right now, Thursdays have been the date that people are gonna ask me for it or that same group. So we're trying to figure out what it is that current, like the current groups are looking for in their schedule to offer, obviously for, for them to reserve that time and then have open play as much as we can outside of that. And ideally we have two courts that are always open play or something that could reserve them.
And then so I reserve it, it's ten bucks, but then if I just walk some street, then do I still go on a pay time bus?
No, no, no. So the only, the only real thing to reserve is if you know you don't wanna.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we'll need a motion for this. I'm going to approve the village pickleball court reservation policy with the changes, with the changes mentioned by. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Cameron?
I don't know if this makes things easier or harder. So I'm just gonna throw it out there and you, you tell me if it's a dumb idea. But just like sectioning off like certain days, like you can only reserve Thursdays and Saturdays or something. Just so someone doesn't have to, you know, I don't know, like my neighborhood wouldn't play pickleball last Friday. And if they would've got there and been like, oh, it's reserved, bummer and laugh, you know, so just have like dates that they know they can just go and free for all. I don't know.
Yeah, no, and I think ideally we would just, majority of the time would be open play.
Right.
People would just go and play when they can. It's just, yes, once we know what the reservation policy will be, we'll have to set dates then as a committee or even a department, because monthly it'll probably change, you know, and we don't have the same group all the time.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. Simplify it just so that like, oh, you can only get it on Thursdays and I don't care what group you are, Saturday, you know, pick a few days.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Ideally, we leave it open, open, so it's more much, just like anything else, like any ball game that we have there or basketball court, whatever. Right. We just know that we're, we're having issues with this. All over town, there's not enough people. So then a lot of these groups are looking to reserve.
Yeah.
And I, is that gonna be visible on the website? So if someone could look at that and see that this has been a reserve, so mine is not.
So this would be on the website, we call it. And then also where they go to reserve, it would say if it's
So it's kinda gonna be driven by when the groups initially are requesting.
Correct. And if they wanna pay us forty bucks to come and play a pickleball at Thursday at ten o'clock in the morning when everyone else is working, reviewing something, we'll have to take that money for them to reserve the court.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All hold same. So move. Thank you, Mike. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding the continuing some police officer funding. I saw that we had an officer that's going to be retiring. So what this is, just so everybody's clear, we approve the funding and then it gets turned over to the police commission and they go through the hiring process. So. No, why don't you just do a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this, provide the coach, police department officer fund raising situation.
That's good. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All hold same. Thank you, chief. All right, discussion, discussion, village long-term facility and staffing planning. If you remember, that was given to you last month. You were asked to take a look at it and see if there were any other major projects that you believe should be included in our discussion next month on ranking these. Does anybody have anything that they think should be added? I just have one and that would be the reservoir. If you remember when we were talking about the well, we were had a discussion on if we wanted to do an impact fee for the new, for a new reservoir, cause that, the engineers say that within about ten years, we're going to need another one. So I would just add that to, to the list. Did you want us to talk about things that were on here that you wanted to change or just rankings? Uh, no, next month, next month, we'll put a list. So this was supposed to get all of our ideas together. We started with staff. They got all their ideas. So now it sounds like the only one we'll add is the reservoir. So then next month, we will discuss them as individual if you want, and then go through a ranking. And we'll do probably a nominal team process type way of doing it and see how close we are to staff. And then we'll put a strategic plan together and then it'll get sent to finance to put a financial timeline to what has been done. Okay. So what was in here is not in any particular order, it's just. No, this, what you have here is the order staff of what together. So then we look at it, we can agree a hundred percent, we can move some, whatever. But when we get done, we wanna have a rank order on both the facilities and the staffing. And then it'll get sent to finance to put some numbers to it to see what is possible. Does that make sense? Everybody okay with that? So please come prepared next month, at least look at that and do some ranking. Okay. We are at discussion, twenty twenty-three general operating base budget and supplemental request. Here's how we're gonna run this and just kinda update you. So tonight, the goal is to get to the base budget. If you remember the memo I sent out was a two percent increase. Anything over that was put on a supplement. So you have four of them that we go over. I'm gonna start off with Bobby giving the summary of the financial status of the village. Next month, we will talk about wages and we'll talk about the last part of the memo was what I called adjustment plan. Those are things where staff has come up with ideas of increasing revenues, reducing costs or be more efficient so we don't need to spend as much. So those are the two items that'll be in the October meeting. So turn it over to Bobby.
All right. I don't know if any of you had a chance to read my memo. I guess the one thing we do need to be aware of is levy limit restrictions. One of the big topics at our conference, just the like discussions in between sessions and at lunch and stuff was how we're all either getting near our levy limits or at levy limits and how it's, you know, state funding problem, kinda like the school, how their state funding is staying and so same with us, like we, the state isn't increasing how much money they're giving us, so I continuously say having to pay their levy to pay for staff salary increases, other student paying increases. So we are currently not at our levy limit, which is great. So from last year to this year, we could increase it about two hundred and twenty thousand. I don't think we should do that. Although it wasn't on at the conference. Although it wasn't odd at the conference, how many places um they do both their max. And I even I've talked to Brian, she would just talk to other communities where they try to um lobby to their max, which to me is. An odd concept, but I I see both sides. But again, I don't think we need to max out this year. I did some projections today. Um. If we assume like a two percent growth every year, that'd be about a fifty percent. Levy limit increase year over year. Uh, if we grow, you know, three percent, we'll get an extra seventy grand a year. Um, you know, we'll need to keep that in mind as we're trying to add staff positions. If we're maxed out, there might not be room to add up. That makes sense. Um. Excessive restraint, we did hit that with this new budget. And then for next year, they did a seven point seven percent inflation. So we should have no problems um with. Our twenty twenty-three budget making that as well, which is great. Were there any like specific questions or any thing Jay you wanted me to?
I just, so you're saying we're two hundred and twenty thousand from our levy limit right now? Because I thought we were at a hundred thousand.
No, I mean from like where the levy was at last year, the max we could is the total of two point.
Right. I think what's important for the group to know is what? What is our difference of what our levy limit and where we are with spending right now? My understanding, we were about a hundred grand. Last year, we were a hundred and eighty-four. So at. The rate we're potentially in twenty twenty-five, we would be buttoned up against the levy limit. And just for people who are not aware, though, as the school district said, the levy limit is rock solid. There is no going over it or coming out.
Yeah, you got a referendum.
Yeah, unless you do a referendum to increase it, we would be needing to do cuts to get under it. So that's kind of how, that's why, you know, um, I think we have to keep that in mind that. And that is one of the reasons I asked for these adjustment plans to look at. Is if we can bring in revenue, cut costs or be more efficient, then we will be evening up that. That amount. And that when you hear gaps that people are talking about, like the school district in Middleton. They're right now above the levy limit and they got to close that gap. So they got to come up with ways of doing it. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware um on where we're at with this, because that, to me, that is not somewhere where we want to go. We always want to have that space so we have flexibility to continue to grow and move forward. So. Until the state of Wisconsin makes it impossible for us to do that. Well, that's the hand that you dealt, right? We got to live with. The bottom line is I don't want the residents to suffer. I think. We now can make changes to at least slow that process down. I don't want to be up against the cap in in twenty twenty-five. I would like us to do things to maybe get it to twenty thirty.
And we can close it.
Yes, exactly, yeah. So I I just, I think it's important for everybody here to to know that as transparency uh and being honest, this is where we're at. So. Um. Let's uh just keep that in mind when we move uh through the budget process. So the first thing we'll do is the base budget, though uh the instructions were to give everybody two percent over their base. Outside of salaries and benefit. Every department head has met that goal. Um. So that's where we're at. Do people have any questions on the base budget? No. Okay, hearing none. Um, so at this point, we will move that forward then and put that on the shelf as being done. Because we'll we'll, just so you know, we'll approve all of this at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, in November. But if there's problems now, let's deal with it now instead of November. So it looks like the base is good.
Yeah, and anything that would happen to come in or, you know, if we find something will change. Obviously, that'll be brought to your attention. We won't try to hide it. He doesn't change the impact.
All right, so then we'll go to A. There was a request from the Sustainability Committee for grant writing assistance for the amount of five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I can speak on this real quick. Um, the committee is looking for, since the limited time of the committee members. And authority that they have, getting some assistance to apply for grants on behalf of the village. Would be beneficial in that there it's a lot of funds out there to to go after and not having staff. That are able to spend their time doing that because they're. So engaged involved in what their duties are as it is, um, we're looking for some supplemental money so that we have. Village employees, county country apply for grants on behalf of the village for sustainability purposes.
Was it actually town culture or was it Sonya?
Vanda Wall is actually.
Yeah, thank you, Van.
Listen, let's have a motion, a positive motion, then we'll have discussion. And then if we're not in favor of the voted down, we're in favor of revolting ourselves.
Yeah, I make much of the approval of five thousand dollars supplemental for sustainability funds due to apply for grants.
I will second that motion.
Discussion.
Well, I understand sustainability, the committee, but it's going to be for the entire village, not the sustainability project, correct? Yeah, I think that's what I'm saying is that it's not going through the Sustainability Committee. It was something that we decided in our discussions that we actually need more of. And based on department head feedback about what time they have to do this work. This is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, well, that Sonya said, and Brian, she said you were formed saying that sometimes the grants are short turnaround is what's.
Well, yeah, I mean, I would like what we found with a lot of the research that was being done on the grant. Policy for the village, the the grants sometimes come at you fast and you don't have a lot of time to prepare. In this, uh, what what was asked of Sonya was, for one, uh, if they are aware of anything that comes up. That might need one of our sustainability initiatives within the village that they tip us off, that that might be something we would want to pursue. Um, and whether it is something that falls within their purview of specialization for an application to be done. Um, the range that was given, um, I mean, they vary greatly depending on the actual type of grant that you're trying to secure. Um, the ranges could be upwards of ten thousand, depending on the the. The involvement for applying for a grant. So this was kind of a happy medium for what we could possibly do without. Um, over asking, given budgetary constraints within within the village.
Um, but if a grant didn't come up next year for whatever reason, we wouldn't use those five thousand, right? I mean, we don't use this five thousand. Something came up that she could write before.
That is my understanding, correct?
I guess here's my concern. I mean, it's just not well defined right now. We have, we don't have a proposal. We have. A five thousand dollar request to maybe help us write some unknown grant that could be coming up. With no way of knowing who authorizes it, what grants we're looking for. I'd rather keep this money and have it go towards our employees than someone who's probably we're going to think about it. If you look at the hours, we're probably getting charged two hundred and fifty bucks an hour uh to do this. I just. Until I know more on exactly how it's going to work and be spent, I'd rather see this go to our current employees than than another. Outside contractor consultant. That's just where I'm going. Andy?
Yeah, I I I hear all of that, but that's just unfortunately the nature of grant writing in general. You just don't know what's out there, so you know what's out there. And as far as like the the argument that could go to our employees, I think that five thousand dollars could be turned into a lot more for our employees if we apply for grants. That facilitator jobs to be easier, to have better facilities and potentially even to have returning uh positions with a grant. You never know what's out there.
I guess I'm a little, I'm confused on how this would get used, like in. Can someone explain it? Is it just Sonya's going to keep her eye out or Vanderwalt is going to then send us something and then we can say yes or no, fill out the grant and then they're going to fill it out and then charge accordingly?
Well, uh, for example, um, the last time that something came up, it was an opportunity for like food waste composting. Um, and that was something that Sonya and Vanda Wall informed me about, saying, hey, Brian, this might be something that you have an interest in doing in Cross Plains. Um, and when I sent that to Melissa and our sustainability, couple uh chairpeople within their. Um, their group, um, they said, yes, this is one of the initiatives that we are trying to move forward on. It might not have been one of the top ten. But it was one of the ones that was out there, something to look into. Um, and that's kind of the nature of the grant process. You're not going to know right out of the gates in twenty twenty-three what we might be experiencing.
But Sonya, we didn't have to pay Sonya to send that our way.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But then the Sustainability Committee didn't have the time with actual jobs and all the rest, you know, and to to go pursue that.
And these are very short windows sometimes in which they catch wind of this is something on the federal, you know, that maybe it's not on the state, but it's on a federal level and it's something. Hey, there's two weeks to apply. Would you like us to do something? For me, realistically, I wouldn't be able to put something together on.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I guess the grant policy we just approved didn't really consider. Meetings, not that I can't. But, you know, that was, you know, the way I wrote it was around, you know, department head knowing exactly what their department's going to need, right? You know, we talked a lot about Mike and you need stuff that he might do at the last meeting, right? So like that made sense to me to not. Not that you need approval, but now, I I don't know, I do we want to do something different if a committee is pursuing the grant rather than the department? I I don't know the answer.
Well, I don't necessarily think that this is five thousand dollars going towards Sustainability Committee. I think the committee would like five thousand dollars out there for. For Sonya and and Vanderwall to apply for grants to address sustainability issues than the plan that we have approved in November of twenty twenty-two. Or, yeah, right, twenty twenty-one, there, twenty twenty-two. Right? Okay, so.
Here. Walk me through the food one that came up then, like would that have required like a policy change or like what?
Well, yeah, so in short, that that would have been a a prime example of something that we would not have wanted to. Spearhead without the involvement of the board because that would have required us to create a new. Um, program that we would had to have seen through in the future potentially. If we wanted it to continue outside of the scope of what the grant funding was. Um, so that was just one example of something. We didn't go after it, but again. That's kind of the nature of the environment that these grants fall within at the present time is that you learn about them. The next one could be solar panels and maybe that is something that applies. And we'd say, yeah, that's a great use of five thousand dollars if we can get fifty thousand dollars worth of solar panel grants. It's just on an ad hoc basis, you're not going to know what you're encountering, but this kind of leaves. Uh, a little fund of money in which we might be hate, might be able to actually take some action. Secure some funding, which would spearhead the 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 start of something towards one of our village sustainability initiatives.
Yeah, I guess the way I'm thinking of it is. If a grant comes up that Brian is made aware of, he can do the calculations as our administrator, the closing down, who applied for it, is it going to violate the grant? Proposal that we just um or ordinance that we just approved? And if all those things make sense, pull the trigger and have have an applied for grant. If those things don't make sense, you know, that's why they're going.
No, I usually say so this five kind of back to what Judy said, this five thousand dollars would just be there in case one came up. And it was like, okay, we've got it, pull the trigger. Um, especially with many big projects coming up. Always do it that way.
Okay, I I guess I I I'm still trying to understand it. We've since the end of July, we have spent twenty thousand dollars. With Vander Vanderwall, all right, associate. So we give that, we call up Sonya Sonya when we need something. She does the work, she builds us. I'm trying to figure out how is this different than this five thousand? We're already probably going to end up in twenty twenty, we spent forty-four thousand. So I'm I'm trying to understand how this fits into all this because right now, if there was a grant. That we thought we wanted and we needed her. Expertise to to help fulfill it, we would be doing it anyway. So why are we, I'm I'm just trying to understand where this, like you said, you put this in a bank here. So when do we pull that money versus the money we already are spending for the contract services with with her company? I'm that's what I'm, I'm I'm trying to get, that's why I I it would be nice to have a proposal to exactly understand. What this is used for and how it gets kicked versus what we're already doing. I mean, Brian and then they do applications for grants all the time for us. You know, they did all the work for the water uh uh fun. So I'm 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 trying to understand the difference of these pot. Of money. And to me, we're already spending a lot on this. I'm not sure why we're dedicating another five thousand. I'd rather put that towards the salary of of our employees. I mean, we're limited on how much we can go to the taxpayers. And do we really need to spend five thousand dollars on this? Judy?
So if a grant they can like it did, like a water one or food one, Sonya would see it, she called you and if we all say yes to do it, can she, she can still write it for us, even if we don't.
I I think that's the difference right now, the clarification on what Jay's stating. It is not part of the village's contract with Vanderwall at the present time for Sonya. To write a grant. I don't think Sonya even has that expertise. It's a different component within Vanderwall that isn't part of our. Our agreement at this time. So she would have to tell. Another department, yes, the village of Cross Plains would like to apply. Can you do this application for them? In or at or less than five thousand dollars? And then they would give me the feedback that yes, it is doable or it isn't. And then that decisions made from there.
And if we didn't approve this and they came up, they could still do it and just bill us. Vander.
I don't know that I had the authority to just incur that without, you know, coming back. And that was part of the problem was. By the time I brought it back to you, we might not have the opportunity to still apply.
Yeah, I think I think that's the main thing. It's, we're saying, we're going to put five thousand dollars out there, you try and promote sustainability grants. If we use it and we get a grant, great, if we use it and we grant, maybe at least we're out there doing our thing. But if we don't, we're going to lose opportunities that are in existence. And that's what we're trying to avoid, I guess.
Anybody else comment?
But, yeah. So I just, I guess, I'm not like opposed to this philosophically, but like, I guess. Is it earmarked specifically for sustainability? Because if Sonya came for the grant or. I don't know, some river parks or police or something, you would hand that off. To Chief Tony or to Mike and they would go fill up the grant. And the reason we're asking for here is because we don't have like an employee here that represents. Sustainability grant writing?
Well, I think what what caused the the topic to start was the Sustainability Committee had asked me. Whether, and I think I brought one of the grants to their attention and they said, is this something that Vanderwall does or that is out there? So they kind of, from their committee side of it, was where the question was posed to Sonya. So I didn't ask her in the grand scheme of, do you look out for police department specific grants? I was only asking with the, within the realm of sustainability grants, but that. I think is more in line with what they're getting alerts about anyways planners.
All righty, let's do a roll call vote.
Rusty Herman?
Yes.
Justin Monacowski?
Yes.
Rusty Calater?
Yes.
Rusty Brennan?
Yes.
Rusty Brunner?
No.
Rusty Burcom?
No.
Doesn't that like them?
No. It passed, right?
Yeah.
All right. All right, B, Village Contingency Fund Sick Leave slash Vacation Payout.
Um, so I'll provide some more information on this. Sense hearing of another. Retirement that it got announced Friday, um, which was not one that I had planned in my projection. Um, twenty thousand will not be enough to cover. All the retirements that we're projecting for next year. Um, in the next sixteen months, we're assuming five retirements. Um, so that means we're going to be paying out health insurance, their vacation payouts. Um, so twenty thousand is not enough. I guess my proposal is instead of levying for that, we use the expenditure restraint money. All that. And viable or for like that.
For the full amount or just for above the twenty thousand? So I, I guess the question, so, so the question is you, you want to pull this supplement in the sense that. We can't pull it because we're still going to use that, but. What would it be going up to?
What's the dollar amount of the retirement cost?
Um, yeah. We had it at forty-three. So how much higher is it going to go?
Um, total for healthcare and vacation payout is over seventy-five.
But under eighty thousand dollars?
Under.
So it's seventy-five.
And that's kind of like worst case scenario, those four people retiring.
Okay, I'm looking at your. Listed, I, I got from you, it was for twenty twenty, nineteen thousand eight hundred and that was with three people.
Those three people healthcare.
Yeah.
So then I added the, um, the police officer, he is on a family plan. So that's twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
Um, and then if four people retired in January, their vacation payout would be about twenty-seven thousand.
And, and these are returns were expected to happen?
Um, only one has filed paperwork. Um, there's two others that I'm very fairly confident are going and then one more potential.
So would this would be going from, we have budgeted twenty in the past. You're looking to bump it up to another seventy thousand, so it'd be ninety thousand total.
If we were going to put it on a lot.
So that would be, we're going to be close to getting a gap.
Yep.
Okay, now, this is a little different because this is something we promised our employees, so I'm not really sure. Uh, the discussion is going to be much on if we do it or not. The question will be is what's the best way of funding this thing? And I'm not sure we want to talk about that tonight until we actually go through the number.
You have a lot of money. What do you, so what's alternative if we don't do this? Where else is the money? Yeah, where did the money come from then?
Well, there's two, what, what she proposed in right now, this is the suggestion, right now, it would, the request is be put on the levy.
Yep.
Okay.
What's the other way?
The other option is taking what is called stated in your policy, which you just passed, we could use that. To offset this, but the problem is that's only good for one year. And most of these things, they don't burn through their money until all three years. This is how it's set up. I have to do the numbers, I'm just flying off my head.
Have enough to cover for twenty twenty-three and knowing that we're getting a seven percent inflation. We should be able to hit it and get. Money again for twenty twenty-four, maybe not the same amount. But, you know, so we could buy a couple of years, but. We're going to continue to have more retirements.
So I have a question, with regard to this, like when you said seventy-five thousand dollars, that's. The cost for this year, but then that cost is when to recur then for a few years, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's. Not, so it's not love paid seventy-five, we're done, it's next year, that is going to be. The cost the next year, you said like three years.
Yeah, and twenty twenty-four was, is some of this, I have it at forty-four thousand four hundred. So it'll probably be a tad higher than that. Twenty twenty-five. It's about the same amount, twenty twenty-six is the same, and then in twenty twenty-seven, it drops back down to eighteen thousand.
So the vacation payout are just the first year.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just, and I'm just talking about health care, right? So this is what we're looking at.
Right, 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 this is another one time this occurring host.
And that was, that was why I asked Bobby to try to, let's do it this route to get this as a reoccurring. And let everybody know that this is something that we're going to have to start. Planning on an annual basis to take account of and, um, like I mentioned earlier in my. Section, I mean, uh, on the administrator report, that, this is the start. We know obviously that's, this is just like a fourteen month window of expectance. And we know after that, there's going to be additional, so we need to start planning accordingly for.
It's all, now, now, what, what needs to be worked out? Is clearly there should be some salary savings in between that time period. So it's a matter of calculating that to see what the offset is. Can't do that tonight, this is something we just have to look, but by November, we need to have things to plan. So everybody knows what you do here. We need to take into consideration of these three, four years. And probably actually. Go ahead.
So we haven't had any mechanism in, well, have we just budgeted twenty thousand every year? Like previously and then had to in the primary issue, we've never put like some certain growth on that?
So the twenty thousand that's been in there in prior years was never slated for retirement.
And it wasn't twenty year, every year, it was just this year.
So it used to be fifty thousand.
Okay.
And then we cut it down to twenty, so that's just in case we, um, have a catastrophic event, we need to spend money on something that's not like.
And this one?
That's just like a slush fund kind of the twenty thousand, so this is the same. In that contingency line, I don't need to add more than. The base twenty thousand. It isn't, probably won't even be in that line, I don't.
It's kind of an amount of you have that retirement from money.
Right.
I mean, does this mean that we need to add a line item for retirement?
We had talked about.
Something like, it's not just.
I think we're.
It's kind of like debt service, where we can like predict like how much we're going to have to pay like each year, what the retirement funding.
Obviously, we're just speculating on who's going to retire until you get the letter or you don't.
Yeah.
We talked about half, that, that is one of the discussions we had with this is having a separate line item.
Right.
All right, um, I guess that's really, uh, wow, that's a big hit. So, I mean, it's a hit, it's a hit, so. Well, I guess we'll just put it in and then we'll come up with some options by November on how we're going to pay for it, maybe even at the next meeting.
Should we have taken a loan on them? A lot of land on the. It's almost like, oh.
No, that's, that one's really helpful and. Because that's, that's all capital, that's not. That's a whole different thing, that's not affecting that. This is now the five thousand that we just approved makes a difference. Right? That is stuff, the stuff we're talking about now has a different, but the capital doesn't have an effect on that.
Well, yeah, but didn't you use the fund balance from the general fund to help pay for the.
Oh.
That's what he's meaning.
Oh, you're talking about.
Who could use the fund balance?
I think it was seventeen thousand.
Oh, is that what, okay, we were budgeting sure, but that's what you were meaning.
Yeah, oh, that's what you were calling that.
Taking another loan, we could have. Take the fund, yeah.
For the fund balance?
Yeah, the fund balance.
But again, that's a one shot, that's not a real. Yeah, the solution to this is getting it built into our regular budget so it can not find gaps and just get us. Five year by year, but that's something we can, we'll have to work on. All right, well, everybody knows that.
So we're doing, just. We're doing nothing with this right now because we need to talk more about the budget and it becomes a levy and whatever, so we're going to come up like the different options, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
How to pay for this will come out.
Different line item in the actual, we're in a reverie meeting.
And like Jake said too, depending on, if a position is vacant for a month, we will be paying health insurance. So that, you know, there'll be some savings from having a vacancy that.
This is going to, this is going to take some time and it'll be somewhat complicated.
Okay.
Because some of the people who are leaving are, you know. Top of, of the, the, the pay scale, so.
Then the months we don't have health insurance, we may have overtime anyways because we still have to cover those hours.
Yeah. You know, it seems like we're cutting it close here, you know.
What do you mean cutting it close?
Like, you know, we're trying to wait out and see, you know, what shakes out with how, you know, where we're paying, you know, health insurance and stuff, just doing fairly smoothly. It's.
Well, what would you suggest?
Longer, I think we probably, I mean, I don't know, we probably didn't budget enough. Before and sounds like we're going to start trying to do that in the future.
Right. What we have to do is get us through the crisis this year and then plan for the, the future, you're correct on that. But I, the only option is now is to let you know, this is the amount of money and now we have to sit down and look at what options can we do to cover this cost.
Right. She suggested the restraint funding.
Yeah, that.
It just means.
Or do a combination.
Right, and I read your memoirs, I thought the restraint could have been used to reduce capital borrowing in the next year, it just means the twenty-five year might have to borrow more if we're using that money to pay off the. The retirement.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll have that discussion. All right, we'll go to the next one, crossing guard pay adjustment. If you want to just do a quick summary on this.
Sure, so, um, obviously we tried to get a crossing guard and we worked on that for. Several months, we did finally find somebody that was willing to take it. Uh, we currently pay them twelve dollars an hour, which in comparison to the Middleton, uh, crossing guards, they get paid eighteen. Little over eighteen dollars an hour. My recommendation that we get them up to at least that amount. To do that, as you can see in the, on the memo, it's about an eleven hundred dollar increase to my budget. Um, right now we have a two thousand dollar budget, which. I don't, that, those numbers were, uh, placeholders. It's been that way forever because I think, um, my predecessor didn't plan on having a, uh, crossing guard there. Like the whole time, um, during the time where the crossing guard was, seems absent three, four months. But we have an average of forty to forty-five kids crossing at that spot, I think. I think parents have gotten really used to that spot and so they drop people off on, on bear and then they cross the street there. So it's, it's really used quite heavily. Um, so my recommendation is that we, we at least get them up to par. You know, the crossing guard that's there now is committed to being there, but things change. And so I think we need to probably start, you know, a little more competitive.
We can't.
No, I, I guess, I, I need, uh, I guess what we need to know are people in favor of it. Because then if they are, then we'll work it into the budget and then that's which, when you improve the budget, this will be all stuff listed.
We made a motion over eight oh.
I made it for the five thousand.
Yeah, and the, the.
Or they were maybe demolishing.
Yeah. And it, that's in the agenda to discuss it.
Yeah, I, that was my fault, we said the double. No, I just needed to know where we were at. Yeah, you're correct on that. All right, so let's work that in then. All right, the next one.
Okay, so, um, earlier this year, I, I mean, I knew we were going to struggle with overtime, um, just for coverages. Uh, we've been down on officer pretty much, uh, over a year, uh, with different, different officers at different times. We are losing, we're losing one now to retirement. Uh, he is my officer that takes most of the overtime, which makes sense because he has the most time off. So he takes time off and then, you know, so he then takes overtime because he's not working consistently. Um, where I have, uh, other officers working a six-three rotation. So in order for them to get a day off, they gotta work six days, so getting them to work overtime is very, very difficult. Uh, nonetheless, everybody was a team player and, and people put in overtime, but, uh, that. It's not sustainable and, and the other problem with that is. Um, again, I repeat it lots of times, I'm covering, like today I've been here since six because I have to cover shift and then I'm down eight. So I'm doing a lot of my cheap stuff, even at home on the weekends, it's not sustainable, I can't, I can't continue to do that. This is a way to do a couple of things, one is we are going to see some retirements here rather quickly. Um, I have another officer that's looking at retiring within the next year. Um, and I have a staff person that, that is looking at retiring. Um, and even our, one of our officers that's been here now, he's gone on twelve years. He has informed me that within five years he'll be gone, so the reality is that our department will be depleted, um, bad. Um, and so part-time helps. Couple of things, if, if it works right, uh, we could possibly recruit from that part-time list, so, so our processes are quicker. Um, we will have had an opportunity to see what they're like. Um, it's not like other jobs where we can just train them and they're out, you know, working the field is. You know, just to get someone hired, that's why I had this on the agenda for my retiring. It's going to take two or three months just to go through a process to hire somebody, background checks and all of those things. Um, so part-time helps that way. Uh, the other thing that, uh, part-time does is it supplements the time. So, uh, when I have all of these people with tons of, uh, vacation, then I can fill those spots. Uh, if we continue overtime, I have a ten thousand dollar budget, which this year I, I had to talk to Jay and let him know that we're, we're going to go over that. And, and we're threading the needle so far at this point, but, um. That. Officer wellness is really, really important and, um, and I've really been pushing for it here in our department and. To, to actually require officers to work six, seven days. And then have, take one day off and then come back another six, six days, it, it's just too much, it's, it's mentally draining. Part-time is a supplement and you can find people that sometimes just work part-time. Um, you know, maybe we could encourage the, the officer that's retiring to, to come in and work part-time. Um, you know, it's just, it's people who are looking for other income. The twelve thousand dollar budget would be ten thousand dollars for overtime, which if we, if we, if I could hire somebody at, let's say thirty dollars an hour. Um, that's a lot cheaper than an overtime rate. With no, you know, they don't have any kind of, uh, benefits to them. Uh, we'd have to really keep an eye on how many hours they work, because that would be important. And, and the other two thousand would be for uniforms if they wouldn't happen to have something or something chairs, um, or something like that. So that's kind of, I'm just hoping to start the program back up, there was an existing program at some point, I believe it was decades ago when that happened. Um, if ever we were to, I mean, we are at a, at a position in, in our department that we need a position or two already now. Um, we are right now, I have, we have sixteen active investigations within the department, so Kim and I are just up for our heads with, with word. So I, and we are already at that spot, but. I think that if we ever got to a position where we could add a full-time position, this would be a place where I would be really ready to cut. And say, we, maybe we don't need the part-timers anymore. Uh, but right now, we're desperately needing, need of some help. We're currently at twenty, twenty-one hundred cases at this point, over twenty-one hundred, after we had twenty-six hundred. Uh, so with three plus months left, we're going to bypass that, we've already handled about three to five hundred cases a month. Um, and it's just been steadily grown, I mean, we're just, um, seeing the, the uptick, uh, of cases going up and up. Since I took over in two thousand nineteen, they had seventeen hundred cases, that is. We're going to be drawing that out of the water, it's just really, really good. Um. So that's my spiel, I, there's other components, the part-timers and they've looked at it, um. I just propose that you, that you take a look at it, not the full amount, maybe some portion of that amount. I like to try something to supplement my department.
Judy. Uh, I love the idea of it, also for the fact that you don't have to pay time and a half and also the burnout, the whole burnout thing will be the worst of anything. Um, I like the fact that if you get them in and they're part-time and if you don't like them, then you know. Maybe not, but if you like them and there's a position open, it's kind of a good way to try them all and see how they're gonna fit with everybody else. You know, I, I think at this point in time, we have to do this, I think this is more about, I need than a lot.
Would it be more cost effective longer term to? Budget for another position, I know we were just talking about how things are tight, but.
I just, you're looking at about eighty, eighty plus thousand dollars. I don't, I don't, with all of this, this long range finding stuff that needs to happen, I, I, I don't wanna be greedy, I just need some help.
Yeah.
That we have ten thousand dollars in the overtime, I still will have officers that will take some overtime. Uh, some of my older officers take overtime, some of you that work with the younger generation, they don't take a lot of overtime. Um, but there's still, I still have some team players there that way, that are, that are willing to take some overtime, um. This would be, you know, officers from other agencies or part-time officers that are looking to get in full-time and just have major transition. That's what that would be.
Corey, do you feel confident you'd be able to get part-time officers or you're just kind of putting it out there as a?
I, I would have to reach out to all my contacts and we'd have to, I'd have to reach down in the southwest. Area of the state where, where I'm very well known, because up here, the officers are getting soft up left, right. You can't, right now, Sheriff's Department's like sixty percent built, I mean, they, they have openings everywhere, so. Um, it's just something to try, I mean, I'm not saying that I would even get anybody, uh, to apply. I mean, uh, our last hiring pool, uh, we got really, really lucky with Matt, but, um, I only had fourteen applicants. And half of those didn't have a patent, so I had to cut that in half. So I, yeah, I mean, this is just a try, doesn't mean we're gonna spend that amount, cause I may not have the staff, not, not have anybody applying for them.
I, I think the public safety is probably the number one thing, you know, that people are concerned about. I think you don't know what you're gonna get, but I think there's a lot of upside. Um, for doing a search and taking a look, cause it could be perfect, but some of these very, very good. Hands and allow us to get through other challenges that aren't even occurred yet, whether it's a illness or a surgery or something.
I'll be honest with you, I don't like part-time, I, I absolutely don't like the part-timers, I never have, um, in my twenty-six year career. But we are at that stage where it's better to have a full-time officer that knows the people, know, you know, isn't coming in. One day and then we might not see them for a month and we almost have to retrain them, they're, they're warm bodies more than anything, I, I don't like that for community, that's horrible. But we're at that low, at that spot unless you are going to start investing some, you know, some significant money, which I obviously. You don't have, so I, I think this is just a try, if, you know, I will have to do my due diligence to find people. Um, that are willing to, to come into work and that we can train and keep certified. The officer we're losing is a huge loss to this department, to our community. I, I don't even, I don't even wanna think about it, cause it's gonna be huge, um, you know, but. Those are the sign of the times and I do think that more officers will retire, um, we are. Uh, we're at a stage where there's a lot of talk about extending, uh, retirement ages and trying, because there's nobody applying for police officer positions. And so officers are starting to get a little nervous about, I thought I'd be able to go at. And so they're looking at private sector jobs and. That's, that's probably still ready.
Cameron, I'll just, I mean, again, and I, I don't know how we'll pay for it, but we have to talk about options, but. You, you know your staff way better than I do, I'm not gonna pretend, I don't know anything about the police officer, in my industry though, if there's a high turnover, it's a bit more expensive. I mean, it's, it's really expensive to get someone and then they don't know if they're doing it for, you know, nine to twelve months and then you ended up using a lot more money. So I, again, do we need to more, you know, we just approved replacing retiring police officer, we need to seriously consider opening two positions in that spot. I don't know, I don't know, I, I.
Well, that's part of the discussion we're gonna have later on, so.
Yeah.
I have two questions for you, one, does the union support this?
Yeah.
Okay, and then two, doing the math, it looks like the ten thousand at thirty dollars per hour would get you about forty shift.
Yep, well, well, three hundred and some hour, no, forty shift.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
To answer your first question, I put it to them, I mean, usually, um. Um, union employees are not in favor of our, our timers, but I, I mean, that was a union's word for years and we would never for it. But I'll tell you, uh, my officers are not looking for a bunch of overtime, they're not overtime.
No, I just don't, I don't wanna riff, you know, because if officers don't want it, it's very hard for a part-timer to come in.
Yeah.
And be, feel like they're part of the team, if everybody sees them as scabs or hates that they're doing it. They're a whole, so I, I just wanna make sure that, that.
I pose it as a department, uh, question, uh, we have department meetings once a month, once every other month. Um, and there was no opposition to it, they were, they were, you know, there was opinions about it and I spoke to them and they really, and, and. It's more beneficial for us to have that part-time than not.
Michael. Um, so with the officer retiring and this doesn't happen. And you say your officers don't like to take overtime or do shifts, how many shifts would the department be vacant next year, do you think?
So I've committed that we're, no matter what, we're going to get up sixteen hours of coverage. I said that when I first started here and we maintain that pretty consistently, um, but. So I can't answer that question because the reality is that right now, uh, the officer that's retiring has eight weeks of vacation. So he uses a lot of vacation time, so then, so since he has all that time off, he then. Comes and takes overtime because he's been off, whereas my other officers don't have that luxury. So I, I can't answer that question, but the commitment for me is that we will cover two hours of each shift. So we, we have eight-hour shifts, at least sixteen hours. Uh, we also, I'm also, um, in really close contact with the West precinct, so anything major they have, we take it over. We don't allow them to work that, they might come in and handle a domestic situation, but then we take over the follow-up on it. As soon as we can, because it's better for us to have, uh, understanding what our community is doing or isn't doing. Um, the last four complaints I've ever seen on, um, at our department level has been because, you know, there, people are used to a certain. Small town policing field and, and if, we're not treating people like they're just a number or a, a case and just going through it. So that's really important for community relations, so that, that part is why I say we definitely, we're in desperate need of a couple of positions. Um, but, I mean, we also have to be realistic about the funding and so I, I, you know, I, I be realistic. I, this is just an idea, honestly, I don't, I'm not a hundred percent for it, I, if you ask me, we had the money, I would. And somebody proposes, I would say absolutely not, because it's tough to keep them up to speed with what the department's doing. Cause it's just part-time, you know, but it's, it's, you know, we just have to do diligence to find good officers and not just a lot. You know, I, I mean, and, and that will be our job to do that.
So is there a possibility that we allocate or add something else in budget discussion and then you don't find a part-time officer and then that money?
No, it was, it was, it's only earmarked for that, so that, you can use it for anybody else. Um, you know, when I, when I anticipated that we were gonna go over a bunch about the overtime, I mean, um, you know, Jay, we're that and. And it's not like we're going over extreme, but, but, you know, with, with the events happening and people out and then you wanna cover. You know, shifts, I mean, we could leave shifts and days open, but that would be a nightmare, we would start seeing complaints and we. I'll be honest with you, I don't get very many complaints about the police department, if, if then, so, um, we've been lucky in the last three years and I've been.
I mean, that number of calls in recent point nine to the point two is pretty startling. Yeah, any anecdotal reasons why?
Well, I, I can tell you that my, my staff is a lot more proactive than they were back in two, prior to two thousand nineteen. So I've probably, I could account for a third of those, or they, they themselves be more active and more proactive within the, the community. Um, but you're, we're seeing increases in drugs and, I mean, I had an arrest not long ago with like sixty pieces of drug evidence. Uh, I had a call, so, I mean, we're seeing those kind of, uh, things, lots of traffic complaints, I mean, this. This is a corridor and so people race in, race out. The part-time could also serve to help that, you know, for instance, I mean, I'm probably, for Jay, it's just that, you know, it's. He, he would understand this, if, if we're on a call, we're not doing anything else, you know, because at that point, you only have one officer on. So if an officer is doing a, a domestic case and someone got arrested, that's, that's about three and a half hour to four hours. So if you have an eight-hour shift, half of that shift was spent on that one call, meaning that nobody's patrolling anyone else. Nobody is looking at anyone else. Um, you know, if we get a call, we triage it, you know, do we, you know, our officers are really good at checking calls and maybe making some phone calls. And say, hey, I'll get to you as soon as I can, those kind of things, uh, but we rely on our side agencies that, you know, at least put off the fire. So we can get clear for one call or the other, and I, I can tell you, I've had days where I've had eight, nine, ten calls and we're just going, sometimes we just go and call and call and call. And the old days of, you know, the thongs and cars and things, that's, yeah, that, those were thrown in the mix and everything else, you know, we're just. We're really good, this department is really good. Which I, I do gotta say, we're doing an amazing job with what we have. They are, they're very good officers.
All right, all right, Washington. Oh, I know we did, I know that's what we did the last, no, okay.
Together.
Well, just, they're all coming back anyway, so we'll, we'll make sure we have that, all right, but it seems, but let me just get an idea. Cause I wanna, I need, we need to work in the number, so it, it, what are people's feeling of lead, are, are they gonna support it or not?
Yeah.
Well, that, that's something we can, we can. Yeah, we have to.
I, I, I also think we're trying something a little differently, because there are different things happening right now with the inflation. There's lots of people who I thought were done with our industry, who are trying to come back and raise a part-time, if you can talk to them, so. Maybe we get someone, so we can test the badge, so why not try it? Throw it out there if it works.
Yeah, no, I find that out, I'm done. Yeah. I'll go around, no gun, just an empty. All right, looks like we're pretty well set then, uh, do I have a motion for adjournment? That's on move second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all full, same, go move, thank you.